First order of business is agenda additions and deletions. Julie has asked, she received another $137.50 in ARPA money, and she needs our permission to transfer that to the ARPA subaccount, so.
Motion to?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we take the $137.50 of additional ARPA money and move it into the ARPA fund.
I'll second it.
Discussion. I guess what actually happened is a couple towns in the state refused the ARPA money.
Oh, so they just distributed it back?
So the state distributed it back to everybody, so.
For us?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Honorable mentions, we want to thank the Conservation Commission for bringing the Trex plastic film recycling program to the transfer station, and also Carol Ramponola and Mr. and Mrs. David Casten.
Casten Way.
Way for their food shelf donations.
And the signs are all up for that now at the transfer station for the new plastic?
The containers are actually there today.
Oh, great.
Yep. Road commission has a report.
Do you have minutes of pay orders?
Oh, yeah, I skipped right by them, didn't I? Select board minutes for this. For December 5th.
I make a motion to discuss and approve the Wallingford Select Board Meeting Minutes from December 5th.
I'll second it.
Any comments, corrections? There are none to make a motion. You're going to make a motion, you second.
I can't, yeah, Mark seconded, yeah, and I can't do anything.
All those in favor approving?
Aye.
Pay orders, yes, pay orders for December 20th, 2022, Are there any additions to that, Sandy?
Nope.
I make a motion to approve the pay orders as of December 20th, 2022, in the amount of $54,593.15.
I'll second the motion to discuss, not to approve.
Okay.
Discussion, questions?
What is the Fremont State Treasurer, why did we write them a check for $21,000 for the loader, is the loan through the state?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I just never seen that, so that's what I was asking. State gets nothing on that money. Alright, that's all.
Any other questions? Boy, I would second to approve the minutes, or the payroll, I mean.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Now, here, Phil.
Well, we made it through another storm, no major catastrophe. I'm not sure, did they get the other truck home today?
No, not yet.
Carol's didn't make it, he said it was tomorrow. I guess, once we get that one home, do a little repair on it, we're all back in full force, for the most part, on that, and I don't think there's too many other issues we had this storm. I mean, it stuck, but that was no biggie. Something else, oh, the grants, we went through the grants, what else did we do?
Nope, we got three grants, applications.
Or something else, so.
Even house farm equipment rental?
Oh, yeah, that's what it was, it's one of the farm rental, or mower rental, from, I think it's a Middletown-based. Bruce and I have been talking on that, I don't know if you've looked at the overall layout of how they've done it. Not quite sure that's the way we want to go, because of kind of open, I would say, open-ended costs possibly, on that. So, I think maybe we want to possibly re-neg on our agreement, or I don't even know if we signed, yeah, I didn't think we'd sign it yet, you know, what we were talking about in one week, and possibly looking into something down the road a little further, to somebody else.
So, you mean, open-ended, because based on the hours that it's actually run, that'll change the price?
Well, no, there was, there was a lot of maintenance possibilities your town was going to have to buy. If it went into, Bruce looked it over more than I did, I didn't catch it all, but he did, that, you know, if something possibly breaks, or a motor goes, or some foolishness, because of wear and tear, we're liable.
Yikes.
That, you know, that's not normally the way we've ever set them up before with
HP.
Yeah, HP Fairfield, that's not normally the way they work, it's, you know, these machines aren't new.
Right, we would have no way to verify whether or not it's been serviced recently.
That's correct. So, I think there's a lot of stipulations in there that we don't need to get into.
He was charging us of, even though the contract where we were going to pay somebody to, or have him provide the labor to run it, he was still going to charge fuel surcharges and pay for the gas, and it just, it just didn't sound right to me.
And is that cost of hours per labor, it looks like it's $100 an hour?
For labor?
Forty hours of labor at $4,000?
Wow!
It's $2,000.
Oh, sorry, so 50, sorry, $50 an hour, I'm sorry.
$50 an hour, oh, 50, okay.
Sorry about that, I didn't take that into it. I just saw the $4,000 and the 40, and went, oh, that's 100, okay. Thank you for the clarification, but still. Yeah.
So, Phil and I had talked about it, anyway, we felt maybe we better try to come up with something else to get.
Okay.
There is, I know we're talking about it in the budget, but there's a majority of this work that can be done with our in-house machine, and not have to sub it out anymore, if we could go ahead and invest in it, ahead for the machine.
That being the brush hog that we were talking about?
So, the brush hog?
Yep.
And that'll take care of the majority of it?
Yeah, you're going to have, you're like 140 roadside edges, out of Creek, Creek Road, and there's a little bit on Hartsboro that you'll have to mow with a, you know, a tractor, but you're probably talking 10 to 15 hours total time, compared to 40 hours, where the rest of it is going to be done with a little machine. Granted, it's going to take a year or so to get caught up with some of this stuff, but it's be utilized when there is time to do it, when we're not doing anything else. You can put an operator in it of our own, that we're paying anyways.
As long as we can get the work done ourselves.
Yeah, well, in-house, and it'll be, we already have them here on payroll, so we might as well utilize them if we can, when we're having downtime in between seasons, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Phil, or we all set?
What's that?
All set, Phil, then?
Yep. I'm all set, man.
And the Prudential still, the committee still does the plowing of the sidewalks, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because they're still not going past our house on 140, even I know you brought that up to them, right, Kathy?
Right, I thought I did.
They used to go all the way up past Hugo's house.
Yes.
Turn around Hugo's driveway, actually.
They haven't been going past my house.
But they went up to, they went up to our house.
They went up to yours.
The edge, and they didn't go past, because there's, oh, and it's also, it's a nice sidewalk, actually, in that part, too.
Yeah.
So, it's the concrete sidewalk, they're stopping right at my driveway, and then turning around.
Yeah, they're not going up the rest of the way.
Did they change hands over there, the operator?
Maybe. Not that I know of.
I don't know, if it's still a gentleman that runs, is all or none.
And also, I was wondering, since we're talking about the sidewalks, about sanding, if they ever sand what they plow, because it gets quite slippery.
Yeah, they have a little sand, and they totally.
Okay, they did not sand in the storm that just went by.
And just makes this trough that kind of captures all the?
Yes, so it sort of becomes a little mini ice rink all the way down.
I think this weekend's will be a little mini ice rink, too.
Yes, I think so.
You need to take that up with the.
Yeah, I, well, I know, I just remember Kathy, I just couldn't remember whether or not it was or not.
Okay.
Public comments. You're here for budget, right? So, we're on the budgets, first one is highway budget.
What's that? Thought he was. Are we going to start right at the top of the list?
About 10 minutes early.
Is this the top of this? Sandy?
Yes.
We'll just have to refresh you what falls under the town garage operating expenses. Is that fuel?
Fuel, everything, the building.
Basically, everything?
Yep.
I think we ought to add 30% to that.
See what we used last year. Actuals.
The actual.
If that's what we did last year, I think that's.
Yeah.
It was 30 that we added last year.
Last year, I think I printed 30 across the board, it's going to be a little different this year.
So, heating oil is gone.
Yeah, it's almost $2 a gallon.
Oh, okay. So, it was this one, then? So?
Yeah, because we put a 30% increase in last year, and it looks like the actuals are more than what we budgeted at the 30% increase.
Yeah, it is.
Am I correct on that? In some of the categories, at least. And look at diesel fuel, aye, aye, aye. Yeah. Gravel. And what is the 5344, the carry forward balance?
So, the state law was that anything that's not spent in the highway budget has to be carried forward, you can't use it for, you know, the next year on the general fund, but they just repealed that law July 1st, so going forward, we don't, do not have to carry forward any highway funds that don't get spent.
It should, yeah, it should go into a truck fund, an equipment replacement fund.
I'm just saying, the law, they did away with the law, so it's up to the board what they're going to do with.
Well, that's what Clarendon does, anything that's not spent goes automatically into their equipment fund.
Okay. So, do we need to do something with that amount of money, then?
I can't hear you.
Do we need to do anything with that amount of money, the 23,000?
And do we want to start at 5301 and go down?
Okay, let's do that.
So, you're thinking 30%, Phil?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's going to cover it.
So, it puts it at 15,405?
Yep.
405?
It's going to be close, with everything going up.
Right.
Equipment miscellaneous is going to be, that's small, that's gas and land and stuff like that, isn't it?
It's just small things they buy, pieces of equipment. Oil and grease line, there's a gasoline line, so.
Yeah, that's not part of that, though, this year.
That'll be a chainsaw, that'll be a weed eater.
Well, it says budget, we spent 2,000, we budgeted 2,000, and last year, we actually spent 2,900, right, is that how I'm reading this?
2,600.
2,600.
Oh, 2,600, okay. Well, I think we ought to put up, put that to 3,000, I don't know what percentage that brings us at, would be about 20% here over, here under.
I mean, is there anything you know that you're going to need for miscellaneous, just?
I think their saws are pretty well, but it's, you know, little things that, you know, we might need, tools and stuff, I just don't know what they have down there.
I think it's, is it $400 worth?
I'm not sure what percentage is on that, it's under 20%.
Yeah, it's under 20.
Probably 18.
30 would be over 3,000.
Yeah.
What's our preference there, do we want to go with the 3?
I'd just put it to 3.
We'll put it on 3, okay.
We'll take it from somewhere else. No response.
Galleon grader. I'm hoping that's going to be out of circulation by June, but I'm not sure. I think we could just flat budget that, or rate it, whatever we do, level fund it.
What are we going to need it for? We're not going to have that grader anymore, right?
Well, you're still, you're going to have, it may not say galleon, but it's going to say cat, you're going to have a grader in there for maintenance.
Right, but what's, what's the grader going to require for maintenance in the first year, other than oil changes and?
You know, I don't know, shouldn't need anything.
Right.
You know, you're going to have to figure something in there, if you roll a tire or something.
Right, do we want to level it, or do we want to think about a smaller amount?
Or do we want to take the 400 we're increasing in miscellaneous, and put the, take the 400 off there, so that brings it to 3,500, from 3,900?
What do we think?
Just as the idea, hoping that we get it, that it actually comes in on time, and that.
I was thinking 3,000, actually.
You just bring it.
I was going to say, it's a 3,000, we'd like to just leave it at that.
Is, uh?
Okay.
The chains and stuff are going to?
Should interchange.
Should interchange?
Yeah, if not, we'll just have to.
Could you put some new tires on that, well, a few years ago, right? Can we save those? No, just a thought, the cost of them.
So, are we thinking 3 on that?
Drop it to 3?
Drop it to 3?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 3, from 3,900.
How are you going to finance that? Because then you're going to figure in interest.
Oh.
So, that's a whole other.
That's a whole other ball of wax.
Finance.
The grader.
Yeah, but isn't that a separate, be a separate line item, it won't go under this?
It's just one, yeah, it'd just be one, I will just, that 5307 will go away, and we'll assign a new account number at the bottom for the new grader.
Right.
You've got to figure in interest if you're going to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but that'll.
How long are you going to finance it?
Okay.
So, that might be.
So, maybe we keep it at the 39?
Well, you had gotten, the last time you talked about it, you had looked at.
Can we change?
Five years, seven years, and 18 months, because you weren't sure if you were going to use some of the money for the trustee's funds.
Right, yes.
The current price was 260.
Yeah, something like that.
And that's what's going to be financed, so.
And it's, the interest rates blow up every day.
Yeah.
Can we change?
This is just from the bank, but, 5%. That's just a estimate.
Well, what's the interest rate that you said?
4.85.
4.85 right now?
Set in stone.
Yeah.
Because you don't know when you're going to.
And that's on 280?
260.
Can we just change that name on that 5307 to grader maintenance?
Well, it seems like we've just put in maintenance and the loan payment, all in one.
I think you want to create a separate line for the payment.
I would think you'd want them separate, wouldn't you?
Because, yeah, just, you know, maintenance is one thing, banking is another, one thing. Don't we do the other one separate?
It doesn't matter.
Does a cat loader separate, cat estimator separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's everything.
Yeah, everything.
Maintenance, any bills on that, plus the loan payment, but if you want.
They are totaled together?
Yeah.
Oh.
If you want to add more accounts, you can, we can do that, too.
Although, we've probably got enough accounts.
I mean, we can eliminate that for now.
Well, I think Julie's right, I think we ought to leave something in there for interest.
Yeah, but that'll get figured into, as soon as you know what the grader's going to cost, and where you're going to finance it, then you can, then you can set that line.
Yeah, but it doesn't, this budget's going to be preset by then, right?
Yeah.
So, we need to preset some of it in there now, I would think.
And also, you don't know when we're going to get it.
No, we don't.
We could have to keep maintaining the one that we have.
Yeah.
So, what's our thoughts?
Leave it at the 39.
Leave it, okay.
I was trying not to hump the budget on stuff, on something like that, because knowing that it's going to be, hopefully, out of the house.
Right.
The new one doesn't cost a lot of maintenance, I kind of forgot about the interest being in on it.
You know, we got to take that into consideration.
You don't know where it's coming, right?
Exactly. Nothing's set, so we need to keep this one running.
Well, we figured the interest into the payment.
Right, but.
I mean, they're not going to say, you got to make a payment of 50,000, and the interest is 2,000, they're going to say, you need to make a payment of 52, or whatever.
Right, I have a, they gave me an estimate, but you had talked about 18 months, five years, and seven years, so you've got to decide on that, too.
Yes.
If you're going to finance it, or if it's, if you're going to use some of that money that's maturing in December, next December.
And we talked about doing a short-term loan, but you're still, we're going to have to make some kind of a payment.
Which is as, like, as an initial to take ownership of it.
What's the difference in the loan, in the interest rate from a, say, an 18-month to a five-year?
They just gave me the same rate.
What are we talking for payments, though, Julie, for budget, if we were budgeting?
Five years?
Yeah.
The five years principal is 52,000, and the interest for the first year is almost 13,000. For seven years, the payment's 37, and the, well, the interest amount is the same.
52 and 13.
So, 65,000 or 50,000?
65 or 50.
If you, if the interest rate's the same, no matter how long you stretch it out to, and if you put it out to eight years, plan on, plan on getting it next year, you can always pay it off.
Right.
There's no reason why you can't.
That's true.
Save interest money and pay it off in advance.
Right.
So, I'm thinking, Tom, we, you know, we know about what it's going to cost, get the stuff, as much as we can, started now, and say we're going to need $50,000 in the budget for next year, and take it out eight years, if it's the same interest rate.
Yeah.
That keeps the first payment down to a minimal.
It's seven years, not eight, though.
Or seven years, but.
So, do the seven.
So, was there something, because we're getting, well, we're getting the loan through the state, right, do they have a?
I haven't done any.
Okay. Right, because we do, yeah, right.
Estimate, this is from the community bank, but.
We're just talking budgeting.
Right, but if you, if you budgeted, say you budgeted 50 for next year, that'll cover maintenance, the payment for seven, you know, over the seven-year period, or whatever it is, the following year, if you decide to, you can take a bunch, you know, your, your money and pay it off, or pay a considerable amount of it off, or let it go for eight years. I mean, eight years on a loan on a grader is, what, you got 30 out of the last grader?
22, I think, now.
Yeah, 23,000.
So, eight years on a grader is really nothing.
Except if the idea is that we're trying to think about switching out this equipment a little bit more quickly than we have in the past, so we have a little bit more money in it, if we're at the eight years, we're for, my brain just wants to, makes it feel like it's going to be, equity isn't going to be enough at the end of that eight years to really make it worth it, if we want, because we'd have to replace it right away.
But when you get a life expectancy of 20-something years out of a grader, unlike you get five years out of a truck.
Yeah, there's quite a difference between grader and truck.
Right.
Probably less than half the hours.
Okay.
Per year.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of eight years, you're, you're going to be probably three, three-quarters the value, maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe half the value of it.
Half the value.
So, it'll be paid off, and you still got $100,000 grader.
Okay, if that, if that's the case, then that, yeah, I was just worried about the depreciation at that point, if we're going out the whole eight years, will it be just a complete rust bucket?
I mean, like I said, you know, you get 22, 22 years out of a grader.
Right.
Take advantage of the interest rate, so, I mean, do you want to change that?
As long as it's locked in, and it's not variable.
Do we want to change that number to 53,000, or for the grader, and budget it now? Because you can't change it. If we got it, we got it.
Well, we need to budget at least 50, I would say.
Yeah.
Are we going to do it on this line item?
And I was just saying, the 53, that gives us, that gives the maintenance in it also.
Okay.
Well, it should be a different line item.
Okay.
Julia will add a new line item, 5346, or whatever.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And then zoom out the 5307.
Okay.
What's the $2 month? 53,000?
53,000.
5346, cat grader, is cattle, right?
Yes, cattle, yes.
53,000.
And then we're going to zoom out the 5307.
But then we'll still be able to use that money if we need to, on the existing grader, just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, just want to make sure that's clarified, so that one's not in a pickle.
Since we are applying a name to it.
Right. Well, they're both cats. Aren't they both cats?
No, that's the galleon.
The galleon, right. So, can we just call it grader, because we only have one grader? I don't know, I just want to make sure we don't get any weird waters of it, being named something different.
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
As long as that's clear.
So, what are we calling 5307? We're just going to take out galleon?
Or, I thought we were to get, so we're, we're keeping the maintenance of the payment.
We're just going to take that line item out, totally.
Zero, okay.
And then?
And then?
Make a new one.
5346, you just want grader, you don't want cat or anything.
5346.
Yeah, like I said, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
2011, cattle through a backhoe, continue weight.
I think we ought to bump that 500, just because we have some issues with it now that need to be worked out. I'm hoping that'll cover that one, like I said, I'm trying to keep this a bare minimum on some of this stuff.
So, 2,500 on 5307?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Plows and Sanders.
5308, not 5307, right? 5308, okay.
It's 2,500.
5310, plows and Sanders, I think we ought to bump that 500, just because of the cost of the grader blades, or the cutting edges and stuff like that, and chains, it's gone up at least a third, almost 50% for by steelheads. I would say 2,500. Is that we budgeted 2 last year? Hired equipment, that says we spent 12,000, is that what we spent, or we budgeted?
Well, we spent 95.
We spent 95. So, we probably ought to leave that at 12,000.
Okay.
I think we can get away with that. I think we can get away with that.
I mean, you're cutting out a mower?
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking, leave it alone, because we can invest some of mower time into the cost of the
Okay.
head that goes on it, and then it'll cut back some of the labor time. Diesel fuel, that's going to be.
Hundred and ten thousand?
Yeah. I would say thirty percent, but I'm not sure that's going to do it. I'm hoping it's going to level out. Where are we standing right now on that? Twenty-seven, five is what we budgeted.
And it looks like thirty-three, three ninety-nine.
Oh, eighty-six hundred?
Uh-huh. Sure the end of November.
For half a year, oh, no, it wasn't half a year.
Ten percent would bump it to thirty. I, I, I think we got to go at least twenty-five percent on it, on fuel.
What would that bring it to?
What's that?
What would that bring it to?
I don't know, I don't have my cap.
Okay.
Thirty-four, three seventy-five.
Gasoline, I don't.
Is that what we're going to do on fifty-three fifteen, thirty-four, three seventy-five?
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gasoline budget, I don't think we spend a whole lot on that, do we?
Just to pick up.
Pick up in a small size.
Gas cans, yeah.
About three hundred and ten.
I would leave that alone at twelve.
Yeah, I would agree. Especially as gas, gas prices have kind of leveled out.
Yeah.
And they really haven't fluctuated too much.
Levelled out.
That's what I'm saying.
Tree service, did we do anything with that this year?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in the, in the.
What have we been doing with that?
Spent twenty-five hundred.
We talked about it, adding money in this budget we're on now, so that we could bring in a tree company and do some work on.
East Street.
East Street.
Sorry, I had to add that.
So, do we want to?
Bright yellow jacket, give it away. Um, I, yeah, I was going to, I was going to say add twenty-five percent to that.
Okay.
Which I'm not sure what that'll bring it to.
All right, at twenty-five.
Four, four thousand sixty-two, five, fifty? So making even four thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for, for? Okay.
Winter's seeing it. Thirty percent's not going to cover, I don't believe, if we use anything at all, because it's gone up, I think, two dollars a ton, I'm sure it's going to go up again in the spring this year, so.
Well, what were we paying a ton?
Yeah.
Uh, well, a year ago, a little over a year ago, it was seven-ten, and I think it was nine-ish, wasn't it, Sandy, or Julie, probably?
We were, um. Got some bills there she can look at. FY twenty, FY twenty-two, we only spent twenty-five, about thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that was the warm winter.
You know what, it's been warm so far this winter too.
Yeah.
Somewhere here, we got to start holding some lines because.
Right, we were thirteen thousand below budget last year, so.
On the sand?
On sand.
Oh.
Do we chance?
I mean, we, we spent twenty-five, yeah, we had budgeted thirty-seven, and we spent twenty-five, we budgeted thirty-eight for this year.
Yeah.
We've already spent twenty-five.
Have we spent twenty-five this year?
We spent twenty-five.
Last year.
Last year, so we had an eight thousand surplus from fiscal year twenty-two. So this year, what, have we spent any of this thirty-eight yet this year?
Uh, ninety-six hundred.
Ninety-six hundred? Seems like we have a pretty good, um, surplus in this line item, what are we thinking?
Bring it down to thirty-five?
I was actually thinking that, bring it to thirty-five.
Possible.
It just gets us a little closer, just because, I've just been trying to add up all the things that we're adding onto this, and that just gets us a little bit closer to
Yeah.
especially with the big forty-nine, eight hundred for the, um.
And it's looking that this line item might give us a little bit of movement that we haven't had in other places.
This is, um, in the beginning, we're sanding one truck.
Uh, well, some of it, most of it's.
So you're saying, instead of thirty-eight, one hundred, put it to thirty-five?
Yeah.
Do it to thirty-five.
Yeah. Well, thank.
Round it to thirty-five?
So, this budget will be for next winter.
Yes.
And by the time this comes in, you'll already have half of next winter's sand in. So you're looking at actually two winters down the road for this budget.
Yeah.
Normally, we don't truck sand until next fall.
Okay.
So, it would be.
Here's, here's price.
So if, if, if you didn't, if you didn't truck any sand this year until after July, it would be in this year's budget.
Uh, yes.
And you've only spent so far, how much?
Ninety-eight.
Huh?
Ninety-eight.
We usually.
Ninety-six?
Just rounded at ten thousand.
Right.
You know, it's if chance, we run out, we just got to buy it anyways. I'd love to cut it and hope it worked.
To make it at thirty, I think thirty-five.
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 We got to get them to stop spreading it and then plowing it off the road, too.
Right.
Salt.
It went up twelve dollars a ton this year, Sandy?
Yeah, thirty-five from seventy, seventy-two, something.
I think we can level fund that, hopefully get away with that.
Sixty?
Yeah.
It's like, yeah, well, that's a buildings.
That's right, that's right.
And what do we add so far? What have we spent so far in, in salt this year?
Nothing through the end of November, but.
Okay.
He's mixing it with sand a little more than normal.
Okay.
You'd have it at sixty, then?
I wouldn't have it at sixty.
You'd leave it at the sixty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we didn't use any chloride in twenty-one, twenty-two?
Just on East Road, right?
East Street, I think.
East Street, I mean.
They're talking about setting the tank back up this year, so we aren't going to use a lot. I would flat-budget that for whatever.
At the nine seventy-five?
To nine seventy-five, that probably just about cover a ton.
Okay. Did we chloride up there because, just because of runoff, or?
Uh, dust.
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 Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, culverts, I'm not sure we spent much of anything this year, did we, Julie?
Have we spent anything?
Uh, seventeen hundred.
Couple culverts, that's it. They're going to ask for.
I think we managed to do most of it with grants.
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to level fund that to help us out.
What do you think, level it?
I know it doesn't buy much for culverts anymore.
You're going to say, when I heard the culverts had doubled or tripled in price?
Grant culvert we just bid was four hundred and thirty-seven dollars a foot.
That's, yeah.
Okay, so level funded, do you think?
How many, do you know how many we got to go this year?
Three or four, at least. And, and there's, but we do have an inventory down there, this year, you couldn't get a culvert.
Right.
But we do have a fair inventory down there at the shop of culverts, so if we, you know, budget it basically the same amount.
Okay.
Got them in, and then we, if we use them, as long as we keep an inventory coming.
Okay.
Could we, could we bring it down to nine? Just jump, just take off the seven fifty, just bring it down to nine?
Yeah, I think we could do that.
Okay.
I know we could a little more.
Yeah.
Culvert prices jumped a lot, but like I said, we do have an inventory of them down there.
Okay. Okay.
Oil and grease, says we spent, what, twenty-four, twenty-five, is how we spent the year before?
Four sixteen.
We budgeted twenty-five and we spent four hundred and sixteen dollars. What have we spent for, um, oil and grease this year, Julie?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, we could bring that down.
Yeah, I, I.
Two thousand?
I, yeah, I think two thousand.
Two, great.
I don't think there's going to be a it, it, our volume hasn't changed any on the, well, with greasing, so.
Okay.
Cost of the material has a little bit.
Yeah.
Gravel, there's the big one.
Yeah, and it's there's no way to pull any out of that, it should be added to, because you're going to lose a thirty-year material to cost difference this year. So that's going to be we've got budgeted at, what, a hundred and seven-five, is that what we wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We level fund that, I wouldn't.
You're saying the price per ton has gone up thirty percent though, Phil?
It's gone, it went two dollars a ton this year. It was, we were paying seven, it went up two dollars, almost three dollars a ton, and now, I'm sure it's going to go up after the first year.
Julie, what, what is best?
Thirty percent, I guess.
Okay, so that is thirty percent probably, yeah, okay.
Well, that's why I'm just figuring you're losing the same volume as you're losing in the dollar amounts here, but we're losing it in volume.
Hold it on one forty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One forty?
Forty thousand?
One forty?
Should we, uh, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, okay, so thinking about gravel, we've had to do a lot of gravel, especially up on, um, uh, why can't I never remember the name of the road? Up, up the.
Sugar Hill.
Sugar Hill, because of the lot, there's a logging, but that's going to be ending.
Yeah, well, we only did eight load there.
Oh, really?
To rebuild that load. We've done a lot on Sugar Hill and Maranville Crossovers up in there, and they're still, you know, it needs it, it needs material, it's not.
Yeah.
Having a new grader, will that make any difference?
I would like to think it would, running it a little more.
A little, a little more level, just because the blades?
Well, no, a little more crown, is what I'm hoping.
Okay.
To it, the blades will be the same, if we get a little more crown to it. You could probably go one twenty-five on the gravel.
Okay.
If you take and cut some of that fifteen off and try to balance it out, probably going to come back and bite me, but.
That's all right, because I'm still, I'm still thinking it needs to be level funded right where it is.
The one oh-seven?
Yeah.
You're going to lose a thirty-year volume.
I know.
That's the problem.
I know.
And, and there's a lot of roads that need it. Yours may not need any, but the problem is.
No, unfortunately, I think we got the hardest road down.
Yeah, it's hard back and need.
I know, it's an awful lot of money.
Yes, it is. You got to remember, we got to get this budget passed, too, not just.
Right.
But you're also looking at people that don't live up on Sugar Hill, so we don't ride those roads every day.
Sugar Hill, West Hill.
Yeah.
Hart's Borough are your main gravel leaders.
There's also a perception in town that that's the only three places that the road crew ever works, too.
Yeah, I know.
So.
It'll really be the only roads that the road crew works if we don't have enough.
Right.
Can we do one twenty? Snag off five thousand, just to get a little more room? Or is that just not enough of a bump that doesn't really make a difference?
What do you think?
If we can get anything for a bump, it's a hell of a.
Okay.
When we run out, we run out, that's it.
So what are we thinking?
You know, in the last ten years, this budget's gone from forty-five thousand to a hundred and seven.
Yeah, but we're using a lot more. At that, in the, in the last ten years, your price has gone from three to four dollars a ton to ten.
Yeah, I know.
So your, your volume is probably close to being the same, but your dollar value is changing. Now, if you want to do what would fifteen percent give us, one twenty?
I think so.
One twenty-two, one twenty-five.
Call it one twenty? Try to take a little more up.
Hundred and twenty-nine with twenty percent.
So twenty percent is one twenty-nine?
Yeah.
So fifteen percent is going to put you down around one twenty-five? I mean, yeah, it's going to be a little less.
One twenty-three.
Yeah, it's going to be a little less.
You look like that?
Give me.
One twenty-three?
One twenty-three?
One twenty-three?
Can I just add something? But if you skim for three or four years,
Right.
then you're going to have to make up, and you're going to end up with a humongous jump four years from now.
Thank you.
Because honestly, I, I'm not trying to be I know, I know I'm here for East Street, but it, it needs, it needs gravel.
Well, that's what we.
I'm not going to play City Hall, I, I told. No, no, but I get that, I don't want this, I hate to see a skim so that three years from now, you're going to look at the forty-thousand-dollar increase.
I mean, that's what we did the last time, it was at forty-five for so many years that the roads just.
Suck, yeah.
Right.
And it's easier to maintain than do drastic re-bounds.
Do you want to stay at the one twenty-five? Or do we want to do one twenty-three?
I would.
What are we thinking?
I, I feel, if our roads are not good, it doesn't really matter what we do with most of the other stuff on this budget. I'd rather see the roads.
Okay.
Because if people can't get places.
Yeah.
Go back to the thirty percent, is that what people are saying?
No, I would be happy with one twenty-five, I don't wanna try to kill this this year.
Okay, so we're gonna stay with the one twenty-five?
And who knows what the prices will be next year?
Yeah, you know, another year, maybe times will be better. My guess is it's gonna take two years for times to better.
I mean, how much you've seen in the last few years, it keeps increasing. When will it, if it ever stops?
Oh, it's gonna stop, because it's gonna crash.
Right, but how long?
Blades change and shoes.
It's, it's all gone up on that, but I don't think we've used a lot of that, have we Julie?
Nothing.
I think we flat rate that.
The thirty-two fifty again?
Yep.
Having.
There you go.
You're gonna be in a worse boat here if you cut much.
Um, because it's so much more.
Oh, it's. I think we went.
What did Wolk say about paving? When we paved, he, they got the last part.
No, Fuller did.
What, what did he say about our roads?
Oh, yeah, we're losing, we're backtracking all the time. We made out like bandit this year. But another year, you're not gonna see that.
So, what are we thinking with paving?
I'd like to add thirty percent to it, but I'm not, that's gonna be out of the.
Eighty-four, five.
If fifteen percent is gonna be, what, almost twenty thousand? No.
It'll be less. It'll be less.
About ten thousand, fifteen percent, it's just a hair over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No grants, I'm sure.
Seventy-five?
Yeah, that's about fifteen percent.
Do we wanna do seventy-five on this?
Seventy-four, seventy-fifty.
Seventy-four, seventy-fifty?
So, call it seventy-five?
Okay.
Traffic to volvices, we didn't do too much of that, because we had a grant with it, if I remember.
Yep, we got a twenty-five hundred dollar grant, signage.
So we can flat rate that at sixty, six fifty.
Do you need it?
Or, yeah, like, why not just bring it back down to five hundred from?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that, it, it's just, road cones and stuff like that, certain little signs we're always using, but yeah, you could go down to five hundred.
Okay.
This is how pricey those road cones are. Now I feel better about spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on gravel.
Hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah.
Road, the road crew. Yeah. Road crew clothes snipping, I don't know what that is.
They don't get the uniforms anymore, so we're gonna make each five hundred. Well, we have them housed.
So five hundred?
Well, fifteen total, five hundred a person.
Oh, five hundred a person, okay.
Up to the board.
How have we done with that Julie this year?
Uh, just a quarter, uh, we paid them three seventy-five so far.
So it is done with the use though, it's. Just, it's just an automatic.
Right, right, right.
So I'd leave it at fifteen hundred.
So let's keep it at fifteen.
Yeah.
Special projects.
Special projects, is that?
It's uh, storm drains.
We, we probably could let, level fund that, hope it doesn't go up too much, we do storm drains again. I don't know what it, did it go up this year Sandy?
Well, it's, I, I mean, I think that.
We had to pay somebody to come in and clean.
I think we need.
Yeah, if we.
I mean, I think we need like twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred?
I'd go by.
So I don't remember what it costs.
So like, like, just doing like a regular, like, of the drain.
Vacuum out.
Storm drain, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
What do you think about bumping that to twenty-five?
Well, it is, it is at twenty-five.
Is it?
No, no, sorry, we spent twenty-five.
We spent twenty-five, it's at two, what about bumping it five? Five hundred to twenty-five hundred.
Good, everybody?
Yeah, yeah, keep, get it to twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
Kenworth truck. Now, the fourteen is done payment, so that must be just a general maintenance on it. We kind of blew that one out of the water last winter, didn't we?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't ever have to repeat that.
What do you think?
I wouldn't change the line, I, I'd leave it alone. Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
And hope we don't spend it, but. The thing is, if you, the tires are gonna cost you close to three thousand if you have to do tires, if it happens to be in a rotation where you do the tires. I know they bought some this year. And it's, the tire cost is around this world. Um, same with sixteen, I would leave that alone.
Yeah. What about the twenty-sixteen Kenworth?
I would leave that alone at fifty-five. That way, if something happens, usually a little something.
How much preventative maintenance, I guess, is getting used in that? That budget, if we're thinking, you're thinking about like, we need that chunk just to have it, just in case.
Yes, in case something, you know.
Right, so is there any more preventative maintenance that we could do that at a five?
That, well, a fuel injection pump, we like going on the other one, and put it through the system, there's no rhyme or reason, and they just decide to go.
Right.
That's the end of the show. The Chevy truck is, we can, I don't think, we spent a whole lot on that this year, did we? Julie?
Yeah.
I feel like.
Yeah.
I think we put it at five hundred.
Five hundred?
Hope for the best.
Okay.
This little road general permits.
That's.
That's out of my.
One, one, three five oh.
Okay.
That's his date number, so.
So we can't drop that too much.
Oh.
So.
But it is, but it is down.
The twenty-ninety is about, probably gonna be a.
Wait, so we're set at thirteen fifty, but the twenty-ninety was what we had to pay last year? Do their amounts?
It looks like we budgeted.
Right.
Twenty-ninety.
That's what we're gonna be paying in this budget cycle.
Okay.
We have on the pay orders, you know, six, six forty on this pay order right now. And then, we have to pay thirteen something in by April.
Okay. So we can budget it at the thirteen fifty?
Yeah, because the six forty was just a five-year thing.
Okay.
So, and the next budget several is thirteen.
Okay, then we can.
So you don't think leaving it at twenty-ninety?
No, no.
Oh, so you.
That was just, that was.
Okay, so you're back at thirteen fifty.
Okay. Okay.
The Ram truck, there's one payment left, isn't there?
No, that's done.
That's done. So just the fifteen hundred. Just the fifteen hundred on maintenance.
Maintenance?
That's all you need the budget for.
Yeah.
And how much do we spend on maintenance on that?
So, our six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Do we wanna level it?
Does that mean tires or anything?
Well, it's gonna need next year.
What about? How much?
Set of tires will be twelve hundred anyways.
Twelve hundred, okay.
Leave it at fifteen.
I would leave it at fifteen.
Okay.
Cat loaders, there's one left Julie?
Yes.
There's one left on. So that we're gonna just level fund. And the excavator's got.
It's gonna be around twenty-one thousand. So you're gonna budget for maintenance too.
So twenty-one, three twenty like you had?
Yeah.
So we're gonna keep that there? Okay.
Twenty-one, three twenty was the loan payment.
So then twenty, then maybe do twenty?
It's going down to twenty-one thousand for the final payment.
So it's three twenty for maintenance?
Yeah.
How much?
Three hundred and twenty dollars.
There shouldn't be, a lot needed on that.
Okay.
Fill, you know, filter, something like that, it shouldn't be.
So does that mean there's two payments left on the excavator?
Yes.
Okay. So are we gonna keep the loader at twenty-one, three twenty?
You think three hundred and twenty dollars enough to?
It's not a lot, you run it, shouldn't be a lot to do on.
No tires, no.
Okay.
Doesn't get run that much.
Okay.
Okay.
I wanna set money aside for it that we don't need to do.
Okay.
Okay.
And the excavators?
Is the payment twelve forty, four fifty-five Julie?
It is.
And we have two of them left, so we're only gonna budget one.
Well, it's one down to twelve, twelve thousand two hundred for the.
Twelve two?
Payment.
So.
What about for maintenance on that?
There's, you know, it's gonna be bucket teeth and stuff, so I would, I'd give two hundred and fifty dollars for, leave it at the two.
Twelve?
Twelve, four fifty-five.
Okay.
That should cover the maintenance on it.
Okay.
That's new, very little maintenance on it.
Okay. And we're at my favorite line item.
And the Fort, um. We gotta carry forward balance, that's.
Yeah.
But, the uh.
So what do we wanna do with them?
We should have one just for them.
Yeah.
The only thing left on here is the two thousand and fourteen International. And that's paid for, I presume?
Yes. Yeah, we bought the, we bought a complaint there.
Okay.
But you gotta maintain it.
Yeah, two fifty.
What's the maintenance on that?
Oh, yeah, you.
It's sitting up on West Hill right now.
Oh.
You're, you're gonna have at least a thousand dollar tow charge, probably. So you're gonna need, you gotta set twenty-five aside for that old girl.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's. We're talking almost a year from now, Phil.
Right.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
This, this is gonna come out of this budget.
Yeah, well, I know, but it's still, it's gonna be, it needs tires. I know, two, three tires it needs, but we're trying to nurse them through.
But that'll be.
Say two.
Two.
And hopefully that gets us through a point on that.
I'm gonna, fifty-three hundred grader.
Yes.
Anybody keeping a running total on this?
Yeah, but I'm just.
I'm just saying, you put that into Excel Sandy? You can just sum it up. I'm not gonna bother calculating it.
Four forty, eight thirty.
Yep, that's about right.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, Julie.
Yeah.
It's all less than ten percent.
Sorry folks, but it's done.
You don't have a gavel.
That was my drop moment.
Okay.
So when we add in the new salt shed?
Next year.
Next year? Okay. That'll be another year.
Well, that's buildings anyway, right?
What's that?
That's buildings technically.
I don't know what that goes under, there's that, and there's other.
Right.
Stuff that should be bought, but. When do you bring it up? And does it go in the budget? Yeah, I know, that's what I mean. I'm just bringing it up, trying to be.
No, yeah, this is the time.
Trying to be helpful here.
Talk about it now.
What were your thoughts for the salt shed? Were you gonna do a cement slab or pad with a, with a bear?
No, no, steel building's gonna have eight-foot walls, if you go that route. There are four foot up, four foot down, twelve-inch walls with buttresses for the carrying beams. With twenty-foot beams on top of the walls, so you got twenty-four foot on your outside edges all the way around. And whatever the peak would be, I don't, probably twenty-eight, thirty feet in the peak. And, or forty, thirty-five feet, and I don't know what the pitch would be.
Right.
On a sixty-foot wide by one fifty, I think is what we priced out. Their building for, the tart building they wanted, I, was it just over seven hundred?
Yep.
Just over seven hundred thousand, and a complete steel building with two sets of sliding doors was two seventy-two, I think.
Yeah.
I was just. That's installed off?
The reason I was asking, I was down in, um, Whitingham the other day, they just built a new salt shed. Not that big, but they used the, um, what are they, six by three cement, um.
Oh, two by six blocks?
Yeah.
That's what this.
And then they built the sides up, six foot high, and then they put a concert hut, steel over the top of it.
With a tart?
No, steel roof.
Was, was an arch roof?
Yeah.
Never seen one of those, oh, you mean, that was a quonset hut?
That's what, yeah, yeah, yeah. So they put it right over the top of the, so you had, I don't know, you probably had eighteen to twenty feet at the peak?
Yeah, you, you've gotta have more than that.
Okay, but that's what, that's what they did.
Salt shed would be all right, but if you're gonna push up a sand shed, it's not high enough.
Right.
You'll be sticking your loader in the roof, you budget.
But I was just, like I said, that was, you know, they threw, they had it up and.
Oh, yeah, Quonset pump box is gonna quit.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the cost of them are, they're expensive.
Yeah, I don't know, I, like I said, I, I just happened to see it, they were, they just finished it up this summer, so.
Right.
One of the big things when we looked into on that, tart building was engineering, it's astronomical.
Right. But the concert, Quonset huts are, they're standard, standard size, so there shouldn't be too much engineering sitting on the block.
Right.
That's our.
How wide was it though?
Uh, I'm gonna say probably twenty feet.
Yeah, and it doesn't bump out to sixty.
Right.
When you're getting into those, you're getting into a little more.
Because you're losing the space that you have on the curve, right?
Yeah.
And then if you were talking about a, a loader smashing to the top of it, it's, it's only gonna be able to go right from the dead center.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're talking a sand shed and salt shed.
Right, well, I, yeah, I'm just thinking salt shed, because their sand was separate, so.
Yeah.
Or do we just try to keep on looking for grants?
Yeah.
For that?
Well, the next round is, we'd apply in September.
Okay.
Okay.
Which would then get us into twenty, twenty-four, that we maybe.
The, uh, Revenue Augmentation Trust, that would be available in December.
Yep.
If that's, wait, the way you wanted to go, some of that for the local match, if we got the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And, my other one was, and you all know about it, is the Creek Road Bridge. That's beat the bearer of bad news, but.
No.
Which, but there was something in, that Sandy, you put in here about that, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we've talked two, three times on that.
Right, but there was something different that came up.
Yeah, it was about the.
What Josh Carroll talked to me about.
Nine percent, ten percent.
Right.
Grant, I know what kind of grant that is, and what certain, he was, he was gonna send the info to Sandy, and that's.
He did.
He didn't.
So I got in touch with, um.
Devin?
Rutland, yeah.
Yeah.
Terry, Rutland Regional needs to.
Yeah.
Put in a report or a request to V-Trans to bump that up and get into that program.
Cause it's, yeah, cause it's, he said it would be a five years to get permits and stuff.
Right.
To do it.
So.
At, at the cost of somewhere between five and ten million to do the bridge.
Right.
Devin requested a copy of the latest bridge report.
The structures report.
And I got a copy of it, because it's not available online now, so I sent that to Devin, and he wants all of us to sit down after the first year and.
Okay.
Discuss it.
Okay.
Because it's not as easy as just applying for that program, and it's a lot involved.
Okay.
That accelerated bridge program that they talk about too, that sounds. Did, did you learn anything about that, Phil, but they don't actually put in a temporary bridge? They have this accelerated construction program through the state or somebody, and I guess they do a lot of precasted concrete and stuff. So you might, if the town agreed to take down and shut the road down for a week or something, they might come in and.
Well, that'd be the way to go if you had a dry, you know, during the summer, hopefully, in a dry week is.
Right.
The access for.
Rather than turn around and.
South end.
Try to put a temporary bridge in it.
Yeah, you, you're probably talking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand to set a temporary to the side with, you know, access, building it, tearing it back down.
Getting all the permits and.
Because it's, it, it's gonna be a free span, as he talked about, there's gonna be no more here in the middle for river restrictions and stuff.
Right.
It's something that, you know, it's.
That was in some of the.
Precasted, I would think.
People that Brian Sanderson had.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's, might be a strategy to pursue, so...
I think they'd still have to preset the footings and stuff. They'd have to sit thirty days, and I don't know how they do that well.
I know, I've seen them take, shut the road down for seven days and put a brand-new...
That's the way to go, if we can...
Bridge right over the top of it, so, I mean, tear the other one out and set new bridges in. I mean, they're saving some of the footings, by the looks, but I don't know what you can save under there.
Not much, it's split right through them.
What about the footings, are they, they're gone too?
Yeah, they're... But that's all part of the engineering.
Yeah, yeah, you have to.
Right.
I did see them driving, they were doing a bridge the other day, I was looking at, they were driving it, the heli coils. The, uh, for stabilization.
Yeah.
Then pouring, they're not putting footings, they're using those as footings.
Yeah.
And pouring right over the top, so that may be way there.
Yeah.
Getting rid of some of those.
Well, it's just something to think about, whether they wanna budget it, how you wanna budget it, or plan for it.
It's something that's tough that we don't know until we really sit down with Devin and really get a real idea of how much that costs. Cause if we just throw money at it...
Well, it's...
It's gonna be a lot of money if we're gonna throw it, no matter what. Yeah.
And then we have the bridge reserve fund for some of the maintenance on that bridge that...
Yeah.
Brian suggested this spring too, right?
Yeah.
When we all got there, remember, he said do that immediately at work? And then he wanted us to do some...
Well, he'd like us to shim it, use some hot mix, clean it and shim it with hot mix. So it was smooth, which I agree with. Leave the plate in and pick three inches, two to three inches right over it and be done with it.
So that's still planned for the spring?
Yeah.
He doesn't think it'll crack with that plate is?
We shimmied the plate so it didn't flex so much. And we also took a rotor mill and cut the edges down so it wasn't so sharp. Or, you know, inch and a half drop, we're down to nothing now.
Right.
And hopefully that took some of the vibration out of it. It's an old bridge.
Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to appropriations.
Okay.
We're here for the rescue, Mike will make it for the library.
Who wants to go first? I left a little one.
Wallingford Rescue is requesting the same amount that we did last year, which was twenty-one thousand dollars. It's eleven thousand dollars that we usually put towards insurance, um, and ten thousand dollars to go into our vehicle replacement fund. This year, we did actually replace one of our two thousand ambulances. We replaced it with a two thousand seventeen. Got us quite a few years ahead. But we're still looking, uh, that one, we got a good deal on a used ambulance. Still wanna keep our fun going, so... You guys have any questions?
Could the phone on them?
Yeah, it doesn't feel like that's something...
No cookies, sorry. I got off of work, gotta go back, so no cookies.
Come on, be honest, you eat them on the way.
We will, usually we submit our budget for the town report, our accountant's still working on that, so...
They said they get by tomorrow, so...
Okay, and, yes. Are you here tomorrow?
I, yeah, well, I can get it, they'll email to me, so...
Okay, I will just leave you this, our stuff also.
You wanna go ahead, Mike?
Sure. Library is looking to increase our requests from thirty-eight thousand to forty thousand to the year. We, do you know that you can get Havilah crap to the library? We have two Havilah traps. And Wood Pilot Committee Day. But not just that, the library's unlocked for the town this, this year. We maintain book path, small library. We brought in the Dolly Parton Free, um, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, excuse me, for the five years and under crowd. They get a book every month from zero to five. And we took a look, the trustees, at the cost of living increase at eight point five percent. And we decided to increase our meager salaries that we pay the librarians by five percent. And so we feel that two thousand dollars would help us greatly in coming that cost.
So you really think it's mostly just for the payroll? That's really the big, the big chunk of that two thousand?
Well, a big chunk is gonna go to the payroll. I mean, we do other things, like we've increased our commitment to Longingford Day. You know, we brought in the Tyco drummer a couple of years ago, we brought in a Maker Space. I don't know who was there on Longingford Day, but the library was a central hub.
Right.
I mean, everybody was a library, so, and we'd like to maintain that. But yes, large chunk of that money being able to pay salaries.
And that's taking into account your fuel, your heating?
We, we've looked at all that, and we, we do our own fundraiser, we have, you know, we have income-making funds that, that we pull from YouTube. So we feel that we can make do with two thousand dollars. If you'd like to give us more, we'd be happy to accept it.
Oh, I'd do, you know...
We want to be approval as well.
Everyone's playing.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the, the forty.
Good with it?
I don't know if I should say anything, but...
Yeah.
Well, I, I can't say anything either, cause Abby's on, is a trustee, so... I'll say, but I'll, yeah.
I have no problem with it. Cause I think he is being quite, they're being quite frugal with that forty thousand request.
Yeah.
Forty it is. There you go, thank you. And don't forget to come get your Havilah crap. You can come next quarter, Justin.
Right.
There you go.
Well, shall we start at the top then, from...
Okay, let's do it.
Yeah. So we just hold off on five, two oh two until we get that number.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and hospice. Two fifty?
Yep.
They are asking for twenty-five hundred.
Oh, wow.
If I could just make a general statement here on this stuff. One of the board members in the past felt like these should become separate ballot items. He didn't feel it was the, the town should be deciding where people make their charitable donations to. So I wanna just throw that out for thought.
Well, if I remember correctly, we used to be able to vote on these items at town meeting when we did our voting at town meeting. Am I correct on that?
Maybe, I don't remember that.
Yeah?
I guess the big thing on, if we, we look at it in that respect, like... How do we know that we're, like, we're trying to be informed about this, and there's a lot of, a lot of different organizations that we could be sending money to. It's, but it would be, I'm sure on town meeting day, that's a lot of items to go through and say, oh, we do two fifty here, twenty-five here, two fifty here. It's just in terms of, I guess, making sure that we're put in this position so that we can make some of these kind of decisions. I don't, I don't know if we need to bring in maybe the bigger things, um, we would wanna bring, like, to town meeting day, but I don't know. We need to do every one of these twenty items. That would be my feel.
Anybody else have feeling on this? Do we want to make the decision ourselves? Do we wanna put this to the voters? What, do we wanna do a mix?
We just made a decision on the two expensive ones. I mean, that's the one thing, is we already...
Yes, that's true.
We've already kind of missed the boat on it for this year.
Right?
Could I, could I offer a thought? So if I recall, in Chaffsberry, what they used to do was they would, anybody who wanted to come and speak in favor of the amount they requested would come to the town meeting and speak why that organization wanted X amount of money. And then they were all on the ballot, so you could vote for them. So it wasn't something that took up a huge amount of time at the town meeting day itself. It was something that a particular agency wanted to advocate for fifteen hundred dollars, they could speak to the town at the town meeting for them. Wouldn't debate the amount of money, and then the town could then vote on the amount in the ballot, just yes, no. So that, that was how it was done at least in Chaffsberry. I don't know what it is done anymore, but that was a kind of compromise, if you will.
Yeah. Thank you for like, somebody like VNA, they're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars versus the two fifty that we're giving them now. So that might be a perfect opportunity to say why they need to get, jump up there.
And I think we used to do a similar thing.
Yeah.
Add town meeting here.
Pretty simple, even for my townspeople, okay.
Yeah.
They need to ask for that amount before, it's just the, over the years, the board just...
Sets on the amount.
Right.
It's not like they asked last year for two fifty.
Right, no, no, for sure.
Or any other years, you know?
But for us to be able to decide that that's worth it to...
Right.
There's been years when we gave a lot of people no money, because the budget just was too tight.
Right.
So...
Yeah.
So maybe in this year that we're already thirty-two hundred, thirty-two thousand dollars up on highway, that might be a better solution for, for those smaller items. I feel like the library, we should make a decision on. The, the rescue, we should make a decision on.
And then what are we thinking of doing with the rest? Leaving it up?
Make it as ballot measures?
Make it as ballot measures?
With that thought, do we have to say right now on the ballot how much that we would be putting though? Do we, we still have to make that decision, how much are we gonna put on the ballot?
Yes.
Right, do you put on the amounts that you've paid them in the past, or the amounts that they're requesting?
Exactly.
Right.
Cause hospice is one that you, to pay the grants of twenty twenty-five, but we've only given two fifty, so...
Yeah. That's...
I think a lot of people don't realize, too, no, I'm kinda arguing against putting it on the ballot, but a lot of people, I don't think, realize that it increases their taxes. So... So, do we make a decisions?
Can we, kind of, do a little hybrid situation? If we were to decide on these ourselves for this budget, and then at town meeting, bring it up to the townspeople on whether they want to continue doing it this way, or would they prefer to, the following town meeting, vote on it and discuss it? That way...
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, so we're not making the, not just assuming what people want.
Right, if, if they, if they're happy with the way we're doing it, then, and we can explain that, you know, the, the library, this is kind of a given. This is, you know, it's, they should have their own, I, I don't know if they should be in appropriations, and I think, and they might almost be a part of the town with a separate line item, but, um, and the same thing with the Wallingford Rescue, they're part of the town, so we kind of make those decisions, but as far as the rest of them, leave it up, I mean, ask them. We'll budget it out this year and say, this is what we did. Next year, you know, do you want us to continue doing this? Or would you prefer to vote on these next year, everybody gets a say in them? You know, cause everybody's gonna have their own, their own pets, their own, the ones that they wanna donate to.
Exactly.
And a lot of these, most people probably have never heard of, or understand what they are.
Right. And that way, if you, like you said, gentleman said, if they come in and talk, you know, and justify why they want this money, let them do the justification. But I don't know if we got time to do that for this budget or not. That's kind of why I'm thinking, ask the townspeople at the town meeting whether this is, you know, what they wanna do. And then they can make that decision. I mean, you're only talking, honestly, what, maybe ten grand now, more than that.
Right.
Probably not much more than that. So it's not a huge, a lot, a huge amount of money.
The library and...
Right.
Right, that's what I mean.
Exactly.
And Mount Holly, cause I think we...
Right.
And we normally, like the rescue.
Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay. So, shall we go down and decide the amounts right now?
Sure.
Shall we start with the VNA? What are we thinking of?
I'd say two fifty.
I'd say two fifty in the end.
The Humane Society?
You skipped Southwest Council on...
Oh, I skipped, I'm sorry.
Do you wanna just go down the budget, not the charity item?
Oh.
So if we go down...
Oh, gotcha.
Five two oh four would be Southwest.
Gotcha, so we've got two fifty there, thank you, Sandy. So if we do the fifty two oh four?
The two fifty.
Two fifty? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Humane?
Three hundred to the Humane Society.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking for, you know? Mental health services.
Doing three hundred on them, on Humane Society?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the level on that?
Are we gonna level mental health?
I would say so.
Two fifty.
Two fifty? Brock?
I mean, have you think for Brock?
They didn't give anything to them, they requested five. Do we wanna do anything to them?
A hundred?
What?
A hundred?
A hundred?
Do you help?
What, we think?
They help a lot, so...
They do.
Yeah. Maybe the two fifty, like everybody else?
The two fifty, sure. So two fifty for Brock? RSVP, wanna go with the two fifty?
Who are they anyways?
Um, they are, um, yeah, the retired.
It's, it's a network, so you can sign up for there, and then they can then match you up with somebody else to volunteer with.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
So two fifty for them?
Yes.
We said for Mount Holly, we're gonna do twenty-five?
Yeah. I think that's been the same forever.
Yes. Um, the regional ambulance?
They went up by a, well, a hundred bucks.
They haven't asked for anything. We gave them eleven hundred last year, there was a thousand before.
Is that one, because they haven't asked for anything, we bring it down a little bit, just so we have a little more wiggle room for the others? Like if we...
What do you think we should bring it down to? Are you thinking five or...
Or like seven fifty?
Seven fifty? Is everyone good with that?
They haven't asked, like, mostly.
But again, it's, I guess it's how many, how much are they being used in our town versus Wallingford Rescue? If there's something going on.
Okay.
At the same time, they do bill people, so...
Right, right.
Right.
A lot of it doesn't get paid, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we good with the seven fifty? Okay. Uh, news story.
And what's that?
Women's abuse, violence.
Yes, the women's shelter.
Yeah, level.
Okay, so two fifty for that. Vermont Center for Independent Living?
Have they asked for anything?
They asked for two eighty, we gave them a hundred. Wanna stay with the hundred?
Yeah, a hundred.
Vermont Adult Learning? We gave them two fifty, they're asking two fifty. Level that. Association for the Blind?
Kind of a weird amount.
It is a very odd number.
We gave them ninety last year. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Green up Vermont?
I, I feel like with, with, with all the good stuff they do, I feel like two hundred would be appropriate for them.
They've asked for one fifty.
They asked for one, then one fifty.
Yeah, but everybody does good stuff.
I know, but I just, in terms of like, that is one program, I know that...
No, I know, I'm just...
Yeah, I know, but like, I know that that is one program that impacts a lot of different individuals, and especially they do so much work, advocacy work for kids, in terms of...
Okay. Rutland National Resource Conservation? We've given them two fifty in the past?
Right.
They're asking.
They're asking for two fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Parent-child center didn't ask for anything, we gave them a hundred last year. What we think?
What do they do for Wallingford?
You wanna leave it?
Well, it's Rutland County, so they'll...
Yeah, and just what do they...
Well, they do, they do classes and stuff, like they have four parenting classes, and they provide, um, presents for kids around the holidays.
Okay, yep.
Like, they just got robbed recently, so they lost all their presents.
Oh, that's right, they, they were...
It was just heinous.
So, yes, we'll keep it a hundred. The flag expenses, Wallingford Flag?
Just leave it at one fifty, is that enough?
Fifty. They haven't asked, so I would say keep it there.
Gentlemen, does that?
Didn't he donate it last year?
What's that?
Didn't he donate?
He donates all his time.
The, the time, okay, but not...
We buy, we buy the flags this year, and some of the brackets and stuff to put them up.
Okay.
Now, is this Irving Smith number solid?
It's a thousand, yeah.
Okay. That brings us to ARC. Or advocacy, yeah, ARC, Advocacy Resources Community. We did a hundred, wanna keep it there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Preservation Trust? They're, we gave them a hundred, they're asking a hundred.
I say save.
Okay. American Red Cross, we should give them... They haven't asked for anything, we've...
But don't, aren't they one of the ones, like when, like with the large fires, they come and help?
Yeah. I'd like...
What do we think?
At least a hu, at least a hundred.
So a hundred?
I mean, I know they don't, they're such a big organization, they don't get a lot of money out of that, but they get something.
So again, do a hundred?
I have to say that for the hundred dollars, you give them eighty dollars of... I have to say that, for the 100 dollars, you give them 80 dollars, of it goes into.
Administrator cost?
Yeah.
Administrator costs.
I know.
They're not.
It's one of those situations where they're a, if there is a more local kind of emergency response system, I feel more comfortable putting money toward, I know, but. It's not gonna change their response or anything else like that.
No.
Yeah.
Vermont Rural Fire Protection.
100 for Red.
100 for Red Cross. Rural Fire Protection Task Force? Do we want to do 100 for them?
I don't even know what they are.
They haven't asked for anything? What do we think?
What are they, who are they?
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know.
We could not.
Are you looking it up?
Yes.
Dry hydrants and things like that?
Dry hydrants.
They put them in?
Not grants. They give out, um, grants, like the buyers should can apply for grants to install dry hydrants.
Oh.
I think, um, buyers should have done that a few years back, and then they worked with the fire department to install them.
What do we think?
Well, I mean, that's, I guess, 100?
100? Child First Advocacy? Yes.
100, keep 100.
100? Vermont Family Network?
Same.
And that brings us to Vermont Council on Rural Development. Wanna keep it at 100?
Yeah.
Okay, here we are.
Yes, look.
There's also the request for the Restorative Justice.
Oh, yeah, Restorative Justice, we don't have there.
Right, because we haven't done it. Do we want to keep it at zero, or, I just, we, we just need to?
What is that request?
Do we want to give Restorative Justice something?
They came before the board before, and we decided we weren't gonna give them anything.
Okay.
That was, I know they came to ask for about a coin drop.
Yeah, they asked about the coin drop.
I mean, I think if we're, if we're giving, in my opinion, just because if we're giving 100 bucks to the Red Cross, I think 100 bucks to them, just because they are trying to keep people out of jails, much as, and rehabilitate.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So we're adding them, Rutland County Restorative Justice, so they'll need a line item.
Recreation, it's left.
I am going to silence that phone, it's driving me crazy.
There's some recreation that's still under the, the.
Yes. Right, the 100 series.
There, done. So Recreation? We have a left here. Is this it here? Yes, this is it.
Okay. We budgeted 9,500 dollars last year. The actual was 7, 752. And they're asking for 11, 281.
Do you want us to explain?
You want to explain?
Sure.
Okay. So 5801 is the salary is, um, concessions we estimated at 56 hours a week, which I believe is, you know, what it's covered, and the minimum wage is going up to 1318. So that's gonna have to go up. Um, that came out to 590464, and then, the lifeguard, we assumed 42 hours a week at 16 dollars an hour. We don't know what they were making in the past, but we did some research into other areas.
It's pretty, that's about what Rutland Rec pays, for instance, for lifeguards, and they have to staff their pools and things.
And that was a major issue with last year, when we were trying to find lifeguards that we didn't have.
And that's actually on the, I mean, it's like, the top third of pay, so it should be competitive, but it's not like.
Incredible.
Yeah, it's not supervising, like, you know, supervisors, it's like lifeguards.
Right.
Um, so, it might be higher than what we were paying, I don't know what we were paying before, but.
1275.
1275?
Yes.
Oh, no wonder we can't track lifeguards.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's also the hours, too.
The hours, yeah.
We were doing, we were doing Monday through Friday, 5 hours a day, and we would fly.
Right.
We went against the law, simply because we couldn't.
We couldn't find lifeguards, right. So if we were fully staffed, though, would it be 42 hours a week? Because we normally had a lifeguard, I thought, from 11 to 6.
If we were fully staffed, if we could find lifeguard to do it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we've been doing noon to 5 for quite a while, we had 7 days a week.
Okay.
We've been doing 35 hours, when we could, when we did 7, 7 days a week, we've been doing 35 hours. But the last couple of years, we couldn't, we only had one lifeguard, so we cut it to noon to 5, 5 days a week.
So you know, one, one thing we're hoping for is that now that we're sort of through COVID, a lot of the programs around, like Rutland High School, for instance, trains a lot of lifeguards in a YES program. So we're hopeful that with a little more competitive salaries, with more lifeguards of an age, we'd be able to work sort of part-time, like be able to have more lifeguard coverage at the lake.
Right, yeah. We're in touch with computers, I already hear about that YES Plan program, and hopefully draw some applicants from them.
Right, but if they're making 16 in Rutland, and they can have, you know, full-time hours, and we're paying a lot less, and they're only getting 5, 5 hours a day, I can, you know, we're just not gonna draw people.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, 16 was, I think, the range, I think it was like 1425 to up to 18 for supervising lifeguards, so 16 was somewhere in the middle. I believe that was the spread.
Yeah, the concession workers are gonna be making, you know, 1318, and I would think a lifeguard has a lot more responsibility than a concession worker.
What did you say, the, the high price of, the high salary per lifeguard?
I think it was in the 18 or 19 dollar range, and those were lifeguards who were supervising as well as, like, again.
Yeah.
So if they had a additional job requirement to supervise other lifeguards and staff.
Well, that the low was 14, and we were at 12, I mean, that just shows you.
Yeah.
And I'm surprised it's not even higher, because, I mean, Rutland Town used to pay that back 15 years ago.
Yeah.
15 years ago?
About 15 years ago, they were paying about 15, 16 an hour.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of responsibility.
Especially for somebody young.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and then, um, so that's why that's higher, and then, did you want to go on to the next line? Or do you want to decide for each line, or are you gonna go back and decide?
What were you asking for on that one? What was it?
11, 281.
11, 281.
I think we should.
Round that down, or?
We tried to be, you know.
Exact.
Okay.
Well, let's see.
It's 11.3 or 11?
11?
Yeah.
11.3?
Yeah.
So, going for 11.3?
And then for summer rec programs, um, we heard from Lisa, who's the director, I'm sure you all know Lisa Katripe.
Yeah.
And she made a suggestion for, um, hourly rate increases to become more competitive with other area camps, because we were also paying lower salaries, um, that the director would make 20 dollars per hour, which is a dollar 46 per hour more, and co-director, 18 dollars an hour. Um, and then the lead counselor, uh, was going to try to get their lifeguard certification, which would be really helpful for the program, so that even if there's not a lifeguard at the beach, they would have a lifeguard, or if they went somewhere else, they would have a lifeguard. So she suggested that they, if they get their lifeguard certification, get bumped up to 17 dollars per hour.
And if they don't, how much would you?
You guys would have to decide what the lead counselor would make without a, I mean, I think they were making 15 before.
They were making 15? What do, what do we think, do we keep it at the 15 or is it?
That's based on what Lisa, Lisa told me, I don't know.
I.
I think we need to try to hold costs down here, because everything else has gone crazy.
I mean, I think we, being, this is one program that actually brings money in, too.
Yeah, so we figured that out.
It's something we need to discuss, too, because it's 65 dollars a week.
Yeah.
It's a.
Right.
It's a profit-loss deal, I mean, it's.
We, we felt pretty strongly that those costs should increase, um, but we can, so we factor in.
Do we know how much the red camps in other towns around us cost?
Rutland's 120.
Yeah.
Rutland's what?
I believe it's 120.
So what is the, um, does anyone know what the school camp is?
60 a day?
I believe it is.
Oh, so that's 300 a week?
I mean, we are way below.
We are way below, and so that's one thing that we discussed.
I know, back when our kids did, it was like 90 a week, because then Wallingford was like 60.
Right.
It's like 30.
For the school camp?
And that was one little, the one that called it the.
The other, like, sort of affordable camp, yeah. So that's one thing that we discussed, was increasing the, you know, if the camp is costing more because salaries are going up, and we're gonna have a lifeguard, then we would charge more for camp, too, to try to recoup some of that money, so, last year, the numbers were, the budget, the income was 5610, I think, from the camp, and the actual.
And the cost?
Cost of just the salaries was 7116.
Okay, yep.
So it was, yeah, it was 1,400 dollars difference, and that doesn't include like camp supplies and field trips.
Which I know a lot of.
On the side, you know, one of the things, I'm not, this, I, I think, I, I believe we should raise the, the cost of camps, for sure. Um, at least like a maybe more break-even point, but I, I do think that we are also subsidizing some level of the community, and giving kids a safe place to be in the summer where they're supervised, and there's some productive pro-social. You know, the alternative being that they're doing who knows what, which may not always be good.
Well, I do think that it's a real, a real good service to the community.
It is.
And I, I think, I mean, we saw what happened sometimes, like last year, there was issues with children that were not in that type of program that lived in our area.
I wonder, but, I wonder, though, if we, if we were to raise that, and then really try to push the recommendation, to maybe try to think of scholarships that they could.
Just thirty, some scholarships, I think.
We do have some scholarships.
You have some scholarships?
Julie, you were explaining that to us, that people offered up.
Yeah. We're never sure, and so, we can't give it away, so, I mean, it's all gone now, but purity, the thrift shop, they, they wanted to do it.
Right.
And just people in town, you know, if I put something out there, they're set for it.
Okay.
We've never turned anyone away.
Yeah, yeah, so that if we raise the price a little bit, then we can at least maybe then recoup some of the cost, but then.
Do we have an idea of what we should raise the cost to?
I think we calculated it, I don't know if it's in the minutes, but I think we calculated it, if we increased it 15 dollars a week, that it would bring in like another 3,000 dollars or something, because I think it's 25 dollars, 25 kids per week, and then there would be like an extra 15 dollars per kid by 4 weeks.
So that would bring it up to 75?
Or it would be 80?
80.
80?
60.
That still sounds reasonable.
Very.
It would still be the lowest price camp around, but it would be a little bit more, but, um.
But everything else is a little bit more.
Everything else is a little bit more.
Yeah.
Right, and we'd also be offering, you know, again, lifeguard coverage the whole time kids are there, which is something we have not offered before.
Wow.
Right, because lifeguard comes on duty.
There's no guarantee of that.
Started, like, I know, but, but like, if we did have that, they did get that, it would, I think it would add a degree of like, safety of duty to the camp program.
Yeah, because there was issues, too, because we only had one lifeguard last year, they were sick, like, the kids couldn't swim that.
Yeah.
They were down at the beach, and they were, you know, sweltering heat.
They were stuck under the canopy there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it would, it would be nice to have another lifeguard.
And I think it's worth re, doing that salary that's requested.
As long as we bring it up to the 80s, so, per week.
Yeah, we need to.
If, if you work, for instance, in Tapestry, Rutland City, and you're like just a, an adult teacher, licensed teacher, if you're an adult working, that program is 20 bucks an hour. If you're a site coordinator, for instance, is 25, at least that's, maybe higher, is what it was 5 years ago.
Yeah.
So again, this is, what we're paying is comparatively low to other local programs that adults could work into, they want to work for some kids.
I mean, because Tori chooses to work for Rutland Rec, because she can make a lot more.
Right.
We've never had an issue getting people to work for us, though.
Just as lifeguards.
Just lifeguards, that's it.
But sometimes it also comes down to, maybe, I don't know, this is gonna come off wrong, the quality of who you can hire, too. You'll get a better, then maybe they can bring other part, other stuff to the camp.
Yeah, the people we have are wonderful.
I mean, the ones we have are good, I mean, that's, but, going forward, it does give you a bigger pool to choose from. And I think we have had issues with, not, not the camp, but concessions, we've had issues. Keeping staff on.
Well, by raising your cost of your camp, you'll offset the costs of the extra costs on the salaries, so you'll basically be where you were last year, so it won't be any, any increase in the, theoretically, any increase in the budget.
That's our hope.
Right.
Yeah, I think salaries have gone up so much, even at like fast food places, that, you know, to not be competitive with like McDonald's is, to have people watching our children not making what they make at McDonald's is.
And doing something where somebody's life is actually kind of, you know, they're watching a kid at a lake. I mean, that's, needs to be comparable.
Okay. And we believe that, that by raising it to 80, that will cover the cost of the.
So the Wallingford, right, Wallingford rate is 60 a week, and now it's 65. Just so you know.
So 80, 80 and 85?
We do the revenue budget at the next meeting, so that's what we could put in our revenue for.
Okay.
The income for.
Sounds good.
So what's your salary is gonna be, end up being total?
We had a 9450. For the, the, the often league.
Yep.
Yeah, for the summer rec salaries, sorry.
What number do you want to put in there?
9450, I guess it is.
Yeah.
9450.
The next telephone, electric, which is based on what it was this year.
Keep it at the 310?
Better go up to 3. What, for the telephone, that's just the phone at the actual.
Yeah.
At this concession stand?
Right. And then the maintenance line item, we wanted to.
Are we doing 310 on that?
Are we gonna do 310?
So that was based on, we met with Julie and went over like the actuals for this year, and this year, the actual is 307 for telephone, so we put in 310, and this year, the actual for electric was 438, you guys might have these numbers, do you already have these numbers in front of you?
I'm seeing.
So we went to 450?
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
And for maintenance, um, we know that there's a lot of deferred maintenance all around all of the rec, you know, fields, that, you know, we're gonna work to come up with a list, so that we can, you know, have a better idea of like what specifically needs to be fixed, but we know that there's a lot, you know, there's features that are falling apart, and, um, the base of the building is eroding at the lake, and, um, you know, it's just. I mean, we have a list in our minutes of things that we're aware of, the garage door needs to be fixed. Um, painting, ceiling repairs.
So some of that.
Some of that coming out of.
A lot of the building fund, right?
Coming out of the building.
Slough tower. And we have 97,000 in that account.
We do, we do have money in the, um, in the building account that could go towards.
Oh, okay.
Do we think the painting costs and things like that, what else could be covered with that?
Yeah, it's all that, I mean.
Any repairs to the building down there?
Any repairs to the building could come out of the building fund?
Okay, well, then, that's fine.
Yeah.
We still have a lot to be done, so...
Can we keep it at twenty-five then? If we're gonna get, most of the maintenance things that you're talking about are going to be on the building fund?
I mean, as long as that's the attitude, and when we come to ask for that stuff to be repaired.
Right.
Because we heard the, the building fund had a lot of, there's a lot of stuff planned for that money to be used.
We can ask.
Nothing more of the moment.
Julia, have we used a lot of that building fund money this year?
Right now. The building, uh, CD right now is almost ninety-three thousand.
Ninety-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
So then are we thinking keeping it at the twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as they come back with a, a list of what the building needs, an estimate to rep, you know, while you're gonna have, with that, you're gonna have to have like three estimates on it.
Right.
But as long as we get some estimates and...
Yeah.
It's just, you know, justified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The portable bathroom, which is the portable body down at the rec field, those have gone up quite a bit, we just got a recent bill from...
Have you shopped around on that? I don't know why, I just thought about that today, it's like, I see Humbards all the time and they raise, has everybody else raised? Door and...
I haven't asked around, we just asked Humbert. Julie got a bill from them, and she told us what the current rate was, which was like double, double a month what it was last year. So it might be worth looking around.
It looks like it's, it's at one-fifteen per month.
Per month, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the increase for the amount of money?
That's the amount of money per month.
Okay.
So that ends up to, for twelve months, thirteen-eighty.
Okay.
To have that one portable body down there.
If we can find something cheaper, we can certainly go that way, but, yeah.
I just happen to see that, and they're raising it by, you know, sixty-five dollars, you know, I can, I can see the justification in it, but...
Maybe not everybody has.
No, maybe we can find something cheaper. If it's under budget, that'd be nice.
Right, I mean, because you got, I think, Door does it, Manchester, and what is it, Dun-Dun?
A-one does it here.
A-one does it, and Shoreham.
Dorans, which is over in the Castleton area.
Right.
Yes, yeah, so there's a bunch of them around, you know.
Yeah.
We can look all around, get some estimates.
Absolutely.
So what are we gonna do for that, for the portable restrooms?
It's like thirteen-eighty.
Thirteen-eighty?
Needs to be.
Yeah, because if we know that it's gonna be used that much, that's the cost we're gonna get, if we don't change it, then...
Mm-hmm, okay.
Field trips, um, Lisa had asked that that be increased back up to two thousand, which was what it used to be budgeted as, and I know they do a lot of field trips, they go down...
I have an issue with this. It's a summer rec camp at a lake. Why are we spending two thousand dollars to bus the kids off to...
Because they like different activities, and that is, especially if we're gonna raise their rates, we need to make it comparable to pretty much any of your other camp, which even, even camps that are based at a pool, they do go to other places too, they actually go to a lake. So it, that is a common...
That just doesn't make sense to me.
I may not, but that's, that is how camps are these days, is it gives them the, you know, that fun little, like, when they advertise the camps, they'd be like, oh, we're going, you'll have trips to Vins or whatever, and that could make what the kid wanna go to that camp.
These field trips that they take or all the stuff they do in school?
Not all of it, and not during the summer. And a lot of these are kids that may, especially ours, maybe kids that can't afford to go to more expensive camps, and it is exposing them to stuff that maybe they're not getting in normal.
We used to have, when Dammie had a program, I think either Rutland or Rec, used to bring people up to Elfin Lake for their field trip.
Yeah.
So there's, there's, see, there is a history of camps going and taking field trips during the summer.
The other problem I have with this is...
Even girls' camp camps will bring a field trip, and they have everything you can think of.
The other problem I have with this is, we had a conversation with Lisa specifically about sticking within the budget line of fifteen hundred dollars on the field trips, and she turned around and spent eighteen-hundred-and-ninety dollars or whatever.
I think...
It just seems like...
Some of that, though, is...
It was a throwback to the board that I'll do what I want.
But was that an issue with not with gas prices being above and already having them?
Well, then she should have checked her budget beforehand and said, we can afford to do one of these.
I mean, it is hard because she has to make her plan in the spring, and some prices, like going to activities, if she's planned and advertised it, are we gonna want her to renig on what she's promised? Not knowing the gas prices are gonna go to five dollars a gallon, or some activity's gonna increase their price. I mean, there's different ways of looking at it. I mean, it could have been that was the plan, and she, they normally advertise what they're doing in April, May, when they put the flyers out. So yes, yes, they should try to keep within the budget, but I think sometimes there is unexpected when you've already promised it.
And also with the, the price of what fuel has been, and also the problem with getting bus drivers, bus drivers...
That's gone way up.
...has gone up as well in order to attract more drivers, so maybe it's all that.
Now, I've got a weird, I was having a weird spend. What would be the, I can try to think of how to word it. What would be the feeling on charging extra for field trips?
It would, it would most likely limit who, people that couldn't...
But you've got...
And then you would split staff, you'd split staff in those situations.
But if you only send five people on a field trip, because everybody doesn't wanna go to this particular one, you could leave one or two people back doing something else with the kids for that day.
I think you're setting up like a town rec program to be like the haves and the have-nots, you know, like, I'd rather offer scholarships to, you know, because then there's gonna be families that can't afford it, that kids aren't gonna be able to go on the field trips.
I'm not talking ten bucks, so I'm not talking fifty dollars for a field trip.
That can even, for some, that, that is a hard job.
I don't think you'd save any money, Mark, because you've still gotta pay for a bus.
Right.
Whether it's all those five kids or forty kids, you've still gotta pay for the bus.
Yeah, the bus is the same amount, and your kids run it first.
So...
No, I'm just, like I said, I just...
I mean, what we open, we, as we talk about setting a weekly rate, that could be something that maybe we could raise it a little bit to maybe eighty-five, for instance, should take a chunk out of that perhaps. If we had some of this marketing camps, you know, parents may want to, to opt in at a higher rate to do those things. But if you do have half a group goes and half a group doesn't, you're lowering your, you know, adult-to-student ratio on the trip, you're still paying for the bus and the fuel, and then you have your kids split, so there's emergency, your site coordinator or something, you know, is it Vins, someone's there, it's, I think you wanna take the whole group where you go.
Right.
Or they don't get daycare that day, because some camps will do, my day through Thursday is this chunk of my day, and then on Friday, if you wanna send your child, you pay this extra.
Yeah, I never liked that.
Me neither.
I mean, right now, like Rutland, like the, the Wallingford, you know, school camps, if you wanna go to their Fun Friday activity, they want ten dollars if they're allowed to view. And I, I, I do think, you know, if we can try and find a way to make it as fair as possible, with, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
It also just makes it more predictable for the parent who has the budget for that, if they know, oh, I'm gonna pay this and that's gonna include everything, versus, oh, this other trip might come up and I'm gonna be shocked at the team.
I don't think we, you'd wanna do separate like that, it's just...
Plus, it's more administration, like, you're gonna have to like collect extra, like, ten dollars there, ten dollars there, it could be a nightmare.
Mm-hmm.
And then what if the kid gets...
The other thing that, you know, we're, and although this is the time to talk about this, we'll talk quickly, you know, we, unlike with like the road budget, we're like, it's all expense. We may be able to, you know, draw in some income to our, our community to offset some of these things. For instance, like Kathy talked about students coming personally to Elfin Lake, that hasn't happened recently, but if we offer a more robust lifeguard staffing model, and we are able to perhaps market Elfin Lake as a destination, maybe we have other people coming to our facility and paying us X amount of money to take advantage of what we have. So, you know, I do think if we can sort of build on those regional connections, you know, go to Pittsburgh, they see what we offer, they come to us, I mean, and may be able to reconnect into sort of that, and that could bring us some money, I mean, down the road. I make no promises, but I mean, there is, there are funds available, we have a nice resource, if we develop it and market it, it could be a chance to offset some of these costs down the road.
Do you limit your scholarships to in-town people, residents?
I would be a favor of that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Could we, just because it is...
They're moving on, and how about we make that line and keep it at fifteen hundred dollars?
I think we should, because of, fifteen hundred is barely enough, and that was without price increases, without inflation, I think we should give them the two thousand requested.
Or why don't we do, because it was eighteen-eighty-nine, what about eighteen-hundred? Just because that still does increase by three hundred bucks how much we can bring in, but then also still keeps us a little bit under from, because that, the five hundred bucks difference in that's a little bit, could be big. But if we keep it at eighteen-hundred, and then hopefully then it doesn't go over again, then there might be a little bit of splitting the baby kind of thing. Because I agree, we wanna be able to put more money into it, but until we get more lifeguards in, we get those revenues in a certain case, it's just, it's, it is money that we're throwing in.
So what do we think? Eighteen-hundred?
By raising it from sixty to eighty a week, you're gonna gain about how much?
But that was really just for the, that was just the payroll, it was really just equating to the payroll at the beginning of this.
Yeah.
I think that's about two thousand dollars a year that that would bring in.
Yeah.
Right.
By raising the camp, but, you know, that's a balance too, because we don't want it to be unaffordable, you know, like...
Right.
So, yeah, I don't know what that tipping point is where, you know, it's gonna be too much for families, but sixty-five is a really good deal, so I think there's room for increasing it when we're ordering.
Yeah, I propose eighteen, because that it's, it's a little bit in the middle that we can, and it's also a little bit more in line with what was spent last year, and hopefully then it can be a little bit closer to it.
What do we think?
I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Sure, okay. We'll raise it to eighteen.
Okay, lake supplies was just based on last year's budget, I think that's like toilet paper and soap and, you know, that kind of stuff. Rec supplies was lower, that's the supplies for the summer camp. Are we gonna do five-twenty-five on...
Just keep it level.
Yep.
So that, that's the five-twenty-five, is that right?
Five-twenty-five, yeah. And then rec supplies was six-fifty, and Lisa said that that could go down to four-hundred, and Julie mentioned too that they did a big stock-up last year of supplies.
So four-hundred?
So, they have a good amount of supplies over there.
Oh, my.
Lake concessions came in over last year because the cost of items went up so much for, you know, that's like the popcorn and the candy, and I can't believe how expensive that stuff is, since I've been involved with the booster at this high school, I'm shocked by how much these things cost, though. That was, um, budgeted at what it came in as actual last year.
So thirteen-hundred?
And that does have an income line, that was twenty-two-hundred, so we make it a little bit of, you know, we make some money on all those Sour Patch Kids.
President, that's president.
So we're gonna do thirteen-hundred there?
Thirteen-hundred.
That sounds good to me.
So, I think we're moving to mowing.
Mowing?
Mowing came in over last year, so we just budgeted what it was over, which was three thousand.
Three thousand?
It was budgeted as twenty-six-hundred last year, but the contract was over that. Youth sports, that's just the same as it's always been, that usually goes towards softball or baseball.
Yeah.
And we talked about, because the cost of baseball has like doubled, since we've switched to the Rutland League, and they're offering a really great experience, and they're super organized, it's a really good program, but it's definitely a lot more expensive. So we talked about using some of that money in the future, maybe even some of this year's money to offer scholarships for kids that can't afford, because the majors, the hundred dollars now, it used to be, when we had it, run by the, you know, the long trailer's thirty, so, in just a couple of years, it's gone from thirty to a hundred. It's all relative, you know, they were, we met with the Rutland County Little League folks last year, and they were saying, you know, Rutland charges eighty dollars for baseball, so it's not out of, out of the realm of normal, but I would hate for a kid not to be able to access baseball because their parents can't afford it, so that was what we were hoping to do with some of that money. We haven't had the five K. Wallingford Day, that's something that hasn't been budgeted for in the past, and there's like forty-six-hundred dollars in that account right now.
The board, back in the spring, had made the decision, we were on the board at the same, at that time, that we would do an appropriation to Wallingford Day of either a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars, and it so would be just like all the other, the Red Cross and all of them, and it would not become a line item in the...
And that was, that was, you set up the, because that's what we figured out, that we didn't wanna have the money going through the town for the, and we were just giving it to them, so they, so do you know if Maria has had, made any progress on setting up an actual...
No, so that's the thing, there's no them, I mean, there's no one to give it to, so it's not run through the town, it doesn't exist yet.
After the, the board had decided that after the first of July of this year, Wallingford Day needed to manage their own funds, and we would give them a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, that was a different board, I mean, three people weren't here on the board then, and, you know, we, I did talk to Maria, and she's small right now, dealing with all kinds of things, and she hasn't been able to create a nonprofit. I mean, I don't see why it can't be part of the rec budget, I don't really understand the difference.
It was never part of the town government.
Right, we're proposing that it is, so that it has longevity, because without, without it being part of the town, I don't think it's gonna have like longevity, you know, like, you know, like the five K, like, you know, we had it once, because one person ran it, and then that person moved out of town, and then it just died, like, if there's not a group that like owns it, these things tend to fizzle. And I think it brings so much to this community, I mean, I have really enjoyed having it back, and it's like one of the few opportunities for our whole community to come together.
There seems to be a lot of momentum to, to continue it and to have it.
Yeah.
So what is our pleasure as a board?
I'm thinking we put that on as a town meeting day question to the taxpayers of this town, ask them if they want the Wallingford Days to become part of the rec or keep it totally independent from the town. Let, I'm just, you know, because we have big feelings here.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'm not sure which way to go with it, only because it would be great to have it part of the rec committee, it should be.
Right.
But at the same time, that puts an awful burden on the rec committee's budget.
But be, get, be, be aware that to create a nonprofit is a lot of work, and there may not be a person that wants to dedicate that kind of time to, to doing that, so that might not be a reality, that they're not, that might not be a valid option.
Right.
Yeah, and I worry about things like insurance too, like, because if they're not under the town umbrella, like, are they gonna have to carry their own insurance, which like, are they gonna have to carry their own insurance, which is gonna cost two thousand dollars in event? Like, that's why baseball came under the-
Insurance does not cost two thousand dollars.
So baseball used to have to, that's why baseball came under the town, was because they were paying a lot of money in insurance, and so once they, you know, came under the town's umbrella, they didn't have to pay for that insurance. And I don't know what the insurance would cost, honestly, to have an event with fireworks. I mean, the fireworks fortunately has been donated in recent years too, but we have no idea if that's gonna continue either.
Well, that's another reason I pose it coming under the town, because there's gonna come a time when you may not get somebody that's willing to pay five thousand dollars for the fireworks, and I do not want my tax money spending five thousand dollars on fireworks for one day.
We feel like two thousand would allow for some activity, maybe not fireworks, but it would still be something that, you know, for a celebration that, you know, fireworks alone are like between three thousand five hundred to five thousand. So that wouldn't be enough for fireworks, but it would be enough for something.
So-
I just see this-
Maybe paying for a band, you know, playing music, or, I don't know.
Marketing.
I mean, I could, yeah, marketing or just branding or anything else like that. I mean, I see going to other towns, like going to Pittsburgh and having all their, their field day. I remember going to that, and that was spectacular, because it was a town-run event that's been continued. They, of course, have a rec director, which isn't something we don't have, and that's something that would be a completely another conversation, but it is that tough mix of, you need, you wanna have, be able to have it keep on going in perpetuity, so it's expected, so that there is this kind of onus that you should get this done, but also asking a volunteer to do that, especially through everything else we're doing, it's tough. So it's, I, I think keeping it in the town at least keeps a little bit of that onus on us to try, not, maybe not us, but at least on the rec committee to try to do something with it.
I agree, and it's something that does bring money into the town too, because people travel from all over to go to it, so you're having people-
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Going to our stores, going, buying gas here. They see the lake, and then maybe they'll buy a lake pass the following year. I mean, there's a lot that goes from it more than just hanging out together, which is just another whole thing our town needs.
It's a real community event, brings a community together.
If you look at, it's, it's, on Facebook today, there was actually somebody posting complaining in their town that they wish they had more community events. They look at towns like Brandon and Pittsburgh and how well-run it is, and they're towns much smaller than the person, the one that this person lives in, and they provide so much more, and it makes it feel like a community, and they feel like together. They have so many fundraisers up in Brandon to help support, um, within their own community and other communities, from food drives, toy drives, veterans, like their Silver Bells program. And it's almost all volunteer, but it is, the majority of it is based through their rec department in their town. And people will travel forty minutes to go there.
How much did they, how much did you spend last year on Wallingford Days, or how much?
So I'm just basing it on information that we've received, we've never been involved with Wallingford.
Okay.
We're just basing it on information that we got from Julie and from Maria, but it's about eight thousand dollars. So the, just the fireworks, I have notes somewhere from when we met with Julie, I can probably give you an exact number. You know, just the fireworks are like five, and then, like, there's advertising, they get another portable restroom for the day, because one isn't enough, so they get a second one, you know, that's like the four hundred bucks. Just supplies, like, last year we had like balloon launching, we had a water station, because there's no water down there, so we had to bring in water and have a water station. Um, we had a craft station for kids, we did temporary tattoos, and some years they've done face painting. They had a DJ last year, signage, I'm not sure what else, but-
And where did the funding come from last year?
So they've always, they've fundraised for that.
Fundraise?
Yeah.
Yep.
A lot of fundraising.
A lot of fundraising. And when I talked to Maria, she said that most of that, most of the funds came in that first year.
Is that something that you're-
And they're just like, they've been carrying over the money.
Is that something the rec committee is willing to take on that much fundraising?
No.
The Walling-
No, I mean, we would probably-
They have their own committee, Wallingford Day.
And that committee is still functioning?
I mean, we would take over the two thousand dollars, like, we would pay for some basic, like, entertainment, supplies, but then if we wanted fireworks, like, there would have to be fundraising for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if, if, if we were to give you, to give the rec committee two thousand dollars for Wallingford Days, that means the rec committee is now in charge of Wallingford Days.
A basic, like, two thousand dollar Wallingford Day is what we're with?
Wallingford Days, it is yours, that's, that's where, that's the way it would go, because you'd have, well, that's where I think it would go, because you would have people that run it now would, would come over and help. They would be in charge of it, but you being the rec committee are responsible for it.
It would go under the umbrella of the rec committee.
I think we set it up as a subcommittee, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just always, I think it would continue the way it's happened now, where, you know-
That they want to spend X amount of money on porta-potties, they would come to us with a proposal and some bids, and we would then say yes, give two thousand dollars, allocate it to this, and we could then-
But when, but when the town spends a couple thousand dollars on it, someone needs to be accountable for that money.
Yeah, I think that, that two thousand dollars-
Yes, two thousand dollars.
The two thousand dollars, we would be like, you know, then every year, the rec committee would make sure that there was like a base there, if that committee went away, that, you know, did all that fundraising, I can't guarantee that there would be anything beyond like some basic entertainment, so I think there would still be a great Wallingford Day, but maybe not fireworks.
Right. I mean, I'm very pro, pro-rec. I grew up in a town that has a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year rec budget. It makes three-hundred-thousand dollars, so the rec, the rec group makes the town money, and it's half the size of Wallingford, so the potential's there, so I'm pro-rec. But I want to make sure also that the money is not, that Wallingford Days continues.
Yeah, I don't think it's a terrible idea to put it on the ballot, I mean, I don't, I think it would be interesting to see what people say, but I think a lot of people would support Wallingford Day. I think, I have never heard anybody say that they didn't think it was a wonderful day.
I mean, I'm, I'm for giving a couple thousand dollars to Wallingford Days to, from the town as long as the fundraising stays, as long as everything stays the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, we can't guarantee that though, I mean, we have to realize that if we only put in two thousand dollars, we might only get two thousand dollars. If we want to put in eight thousand dollars, then we're gonna get fireworks.
Right.
But we tried to find a balance in there, we're like, we could provide like a basic Wallingford Day, and then if people wanted to fundraise for the rest, you know, we can help, but we can't guarantee that we're gonna be the ones doing that.
I just think the less money you put into, the town puts in, the more people are gonna do, work toward.
And that's good, that's a good point.
I, I, that doesn't work in fundraising in general, if the, if you, the, the minute you start to say, oh, I'm gonna rely only on a non-constant source of money, which, like, you just, the idea of like existing as a nonprofit only on grants, is you never will survive. You have to have some kind of inflection, a steady, like, as you guys say, like a steady stream of money coming in so that we know that it will exist. And then you, it's almost like that matching, like, BPR does so well on those fundraising, fund drive, fundraising drives, because they have those, oh, we have this one person that's bringing in forty-five hundred dollars for every money that we spend during this hour. They already have that forty-five hundred bucks, but they can say that. So in this case, it's, we have this two thousand bucks, so we know it's going to start, then the fundraising comes in knowing that they're not just throwing money at something that's not worth it.
But they know there's gonna at least be a base of this, and whatever they give will just make it better.
Right.
But it will happen, no matter what.
Sandy, does that increase the town's insurance by all change? Okay.
I'm just opposed to it.
Right.
I don't have a problem if you want to do fifteen hundred dollars, but-
So, where do you want to go with this?
You're saying, you're proposing fifteen hundred dollars towards this? But as, but you're saying as appropriation or as they're part of the budget? I guess that's the-
Well, at this point, it's, I guess it becomes part of the budget.
Okay.
My fear is that as soon as you put it into the budget, the next year they're gonna come back and say, we want two thousand, the next year after that, they're gonna come back and say, we want three thousand.
But if they can prove that it's worth, just like, I mean, we've upped other stuff because of the cost or whatever.
It's funny, because you keep saying that, you keep saying you're a data person, but really show me, how much money does it bring into the town?
It's-
You bring in a bunch of outside vendors, so all the people that have got stores and restaurants in town-
It keeps stores open, it keeps stores open. You find out-
No, they did, because I mean, the, the, which about the cafe did really well, Main Street Cafe did really well, and the Marv's did very well.
And then people return, and you have return customers that will drive down here to go there. So, once they have a reason to come here, because otherwise, you may not stop. But once you start seeing how great it is, you will return.
And you also had like Sparkle Barn doing things in conjunction with the day, so their business is increasing because of it?
Correct, they also, it's just, it's difficult sometimes to quantify financially, like, what an experience with your family and your community's worth. Like, what is it worth to have my kids play with these other kids, and like, people come together and bond for, you know, three hours of shared time in a town resource, in a public setting? Like, sometimes it's hard to put a monetary value on that, but when it comes to town meetings, and it comes to increased volunteers, it becomes like, people be, having a sense of pride in our community, they don't want to move out.
Yeah.
They, they want to talk to their friends and say, oh, you want to buy a house? Wallingford's a great place to live, and they come in here, and then they have kids in our schools. So like-
Does bring people to buy houses.
A lot of these things aren't something you can necessarily say, well, the town made seventy-five dollars because these five families were here, it's, what's the due reputation of this town? And how does that long-term benefit our, our community?
Yeah.
And it can't always be measured in money.
No, and it's, it's that, what's it, it's the soft income, because it's downstream, it's people giving good word of mouth of how Wallingford is a good place for families. So if you're looking between this town and this town, you're gonna go to the one that's more family-friendly if you are looking to raise a kid, which means our houses will sell. I mean, yes, right now, that's not as big, because there was a, a boom down the road though. I mean, we've gone through times when there's, so, you drive down Main Street, and it's for sale, for sale, for sale, forever. Part of it is also a reputation of a good town.
So do we want to go with fifteen hundred, or do we want to go with two thousand?
Seventeen fifty. I'll cut you in the middle, but-
Splitting the baby has been working tonight, so I, I, I'm, I'm good with the seventeen fifty, and also it is, the guys you say, it's, if they're, they think that they're gonna be continuing going up and up and up year after year, at least slow, slow it down at the start while it's still coming back up. I, I, I would be fine with seventeen fifty.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. My, like I said, my concern is whether it actually will fall into the rec, in rec's responsibility, or does it go back to appropriations?
Okay, seventeen fifty, I give up the fight.
Yeah, but I think, I think that might be a really good thing to put onto the ballot, like, we're funding it for the, that, that one year, but saying, going forward, are we having this as a appropriations, that would give them enough time to set up a five oh one C three and get all that stuff going.
Right, so in a town meeting, you ask, I mean-
Right.
Yes.
I, I say, I don't, I would probably prefer it to be into the town, but it just puts, like I said, it falls under, it's a num, you know, it falls under the rec committee as a separate subcommittee, but it's still, the rec committees-
And that would give some clarity.
You know, overseeing of it.
Would, would give some direction to someone who wanted to carry it forward, if the towns, towns voters have said, we want this, but not as part of the town. Provide some clarity and some, maybe a deadline, if you will, to get this stuff in to move forward, if the town feels it's important.
And it'll show if the town says it's worth it or not, because just because, you know, the people we all know think it's worth it, maybe there is a large population that doesn't, that we aren't as connected with.
The fire department did it for years, and then bit by bit, it just dwindled out. Nobody would volunteer to help.
And then you cut that, and then they cut their budget for it.
No, eventually they just gave up. They raised money every year to do it. That was part of their coin drop and part of their bingo and-
I think the lesson here is if you have an infrastructure, like you have an overseeing committee, like the rec committee, there to help support the subcommittee, that hopefully will keep this event going that so many people appreciate in, in the community, and outside the community.
I hope so, I, I hope it would give it some longevity.
Yeah.
And in the end, if it doesn't, we can always take it off the budget.
Exactly.
We could say, you know, like, this is not working, you guys aren't raising enough funds, we slash it. I hope that's not gonna be the case, but we can cut from it.
Exactly.
All right, let's move on.
And then the only last one was recreation programs, we wanted to go back up to a thousand, which was what it was previously. We have lots of ideas for recreation programs, and, you know, we're gonna come back to you with that survey to try to gauge the community for what they really wanna see, but we'd love to bring back things like line dancing was a hit, um, you know, Cookies with Santa, I guess the cafe is doing now, but like, things like that, like, community events that, you know, cost like a hundred bucks, but are gonna be like fun community-building events, um, but also things that people could pay for, and then, you know, whatever they pay goes back into their kitty, and we can like continue to have different rec programs for kids and adults.
Yeah, I'd love to see like more pickup activity, pickup sports, for instance, we have all this great field space out there that-
I think you need to put a lot more focus on adult.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Fifty percent of the people in this town are retirees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think doing things like guided walks would be a great idea.
I think that'd be great.
Other, um, adult community events would be great. Um, I know that Lois has done like, um, through the library, but maybe it could be offered in other things, different like short-term classes, um-
Yeah, we were talking about painting at the last one, like, doing like a-
Let's move on, okay? It's nine o'clock now, so-
Yeah, I know.
So did we decide to keep it with, how high are we going to the town? That's the question.
Oh, we're at the parade.
I'm telling that, folks, I gotta, I gotta go. Yeah, yeah, I gotta get my daughter from, after Rockland. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we know that there were some issues with the parade last year, so we included five hundred dollars to make sure that we had money for traffic control. And I know that there is some traffic control that's already called in, but I was wondering if maybe it's not enough, because there is like a document that-
I think last year, a lot of it was just communication onto the traffic control, not necessarily that there wasn't enough.
Right.
It just was more of a, a lack of-
Well, we're gonna get to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that we have some money, just in case we need it. We don't, we don't, you know, I don't know what went wrong, I don't know what we're gonna do differently, but we're gonna figure it out, and I want to come meet with you guys before the parade, make sure we all know what's going on, and-
For fifty-eight seventeen, what amount, are we thinking of there?
Seven fifty?
Go with it, bud.
Seven fifty, seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Okay.
Does that work?
And are we good with the Memorial Day Parade, five hundred?
So I realized, I hadn't realized this when we put that in the budget, there is another line item somewhere in the budget for Memorial Day Parade?
Just flags.
Oh, that's-
The flags, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that money, that five hundred, we might not need it at all, but, but if we do need it, it's there.
Yeah, we're just worried that we might need it.
So just gonna keep that there?
Seven fifty.
Oh, sorry, so the-
But we're not doing the other new one?
Fifty-eight, seven.
Okay.
So the, so the thousand was the, oh, you don't have it on there, um, on here, it's Memorial Day Parade. It would be a new line item, five hundred for, uh, traffic control.
Oh, I thought she was explaining that was part of the recreation program.
I thought that at first, now I see it's-
No, but then I saw it down there, and went, oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, there's no budget now for the Memorial Day Parade, I guess.
And how, do we, are we just throwing out the five hundred because we think that's how much traffic control is?
So Brian, um, Brian Ferguson, who's on the rec committee, he had some ideas that where they had hired, some police officers, like, you know, in addition to like, who the town had for some things up in Shrewsbury.
Okay.
And, you know, we just based on whatever they had for an hourly rate, just came up with a number for what it would cost to get some extra, like, because, you know, we don't want just regular volunteers stocking traffic, every seven or one forty, we would want like, some, who knows what it would be.
Well, it was last year, because it was the sheriffs that did it down farther.
Sheriff, and I think the fire department.
Fire, or somebody.
Yeah.
Go with that, or?
It just wasn't done in time.
Right.
Something went wrong, and I want to make sure, like, we have money to make sure it doesn't go wrong, because safety is really important, right?
Mm-hmm.
Route seven.
Yeah.
So to you guys, you know, but-
Were we adding the new one then? So it would be fifty-eight twenty-one?
Something like that. And do we want to go with that at five hundred?
I really don't think it costs you two hundred dollars to bring in a couple sheriffs for-
Unless we have to.
It's like two fifty an hour or something.
We, we want something there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're gonna pay a hundred, probably a hundred and a quarter an hour. Well, what's our, what's our hourly rate that we just budgeted?
For the sheriff, I think.
For the sheriff.
Is that forty-five dollars an hour?
Forty-five dollars an hour.
Forty, yeah, forty-six thirty was, huh?
Yeah.
He went up too.
But, under a separate contract, I bet you he's up to a hundred at least.
Administrative fees and all that.
Yeah.
So, what, what, what do we want that thing to be? Do we want it to be what's proposed, or do we want-
Two fifty?
Two fifty?
I mean, you're only gonna get two officers for less than an hour for that.
Do we want to go three?
On a special contract, you're gonna pay more than what the town pays, more than likely. So, especially with, because they, they build, they turn their blue lights on, they build separate. If they're, you know, have the car they build, they're not warm, they build.
So do we have a figure?
That's what Shannon was saying, the five hundred.
So maybe we base it on Brian's numbers from another event, so, you know, I don't, we'll call around and find out, but we don't have the details right now.
Right, okay. Sounds like consensus is what we're doing.
We're gonna do five hundred or two fifty.
I think we're going with five, am I correct on this?
I think that is horrible.
I don't think it is.
Five hundred is.
Move on, people.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks. Thanks.
Purchasing policy revision. So Sandy and I went in and reworded based on feedback we had at the last meeting. Where the heck did I do that? So if everybody's good with the wording, we could have, need a motion to adopt that.
Can I read that? If you have it up.
I want this here.
I just can't find it. It's all right, I can't find it. Oh, here it is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the modified wording to the purchasing bidding policy for the town of Wallingford.
Give a second.
I'll say.
You've been quiet, so.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a request for proposal for reappraisal.
Can I put the, that updated page on your table?
Oh, thank you.
Page four. John David in town.
Right here, page four. Got it.
I have had a little bit of feedback from a couple individuals that felt that we shouldn't be doing a reappraisal when statewide property values have gone crazy. But I do, I think the previous reappraisal, I mean, some of our properties in town, I think were seriously under valued to begin with. I do think there is a value for us doing this reappraisal. And John is expecting, we're going to get told by the state.
That we're going to have to do it.
We're going to have to do this anyways.
Okay.
So, other people's thoughts are on this, but.
I think with everything that's happened with property value, they are now, even with the readjustment, they are going to be higher than they were in the last reappraisal. And I, I guess I have to kind of concur. I think John's right at some point with the percentage being so out of whack.
And if we say this now, how, and it was how long until it would probably even occur? Cause it wasn't.
The actual, well, it was five years, I thought it was, that we couldn't, did you get the list?
Twenty-four, is it twenty-four, twenty-five?
You could start in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Complete it for twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-six grand rounds.
And who can predict what housing would be like then?
Eight, nine years since the last one?
No, eighteen.
Eighteen years?
No, the two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Twenty eighteen.
It was eighteen years, I think we definitely should. I mean, it's, it's, I don't, I think the, the prices are still, even if they do level out and scoot back a little bit, they are definitely like what you're saying. They're, they're above what they were before. And having an accurate.
Even before the pandemic came, you know, you'd see in the newsletter, there were properties constantly being sold in town that were way higher than what the town had them value that. So I think there's a value to doing.
Problem is by the time it's ready to do, in twenty twenty-four to start, I got a feeling that we're going to be in a, a bottom housing. We're going to be falling rapidly, I think, over the next two years.
I think with where housing stock is and the lack of houses that are around, I think it might fall a little bit, but I don't think it's going to fall a lot. And I, I truly believe that we're dealing with a higher value than we were. I don't think, I don't think you're going to see a bottom drop because that significantly, because there really, there is a housing shortage right now terrifically in Vermont and many other places in the country.
Right, but I'm, I'm afraid that just watching the market and seeing what's selling, depends on where you are. But I'm just, I'm afraid that the housing, the houses that lost value, that people are selling the houses that lost, that have just purchased. I've heard people that have come up from down country bought houses at a, you know, huge price.
Yes.
And have turned around and now selling them and because they don't like it up here or for whatever reason, you're moving and you're losing money.
But that's, but that's like, like thinking about like the red house, just like a couple of houses up from here, that was one thirty-five three years ago. And they've sold for three twenty-five. So it's like, if you're, even if you're going up, even if it is going to come down from that three twenty-five, you're still getting to maybe that one eighty, one sixty.
Right.
It's still, it's still a challenge.
And your argument offsets the complaints that Bruce has, that it's so high right now, if it's going to fall, it'd be more realistic.
It's going to come down, it's, but you're right. I don't think it, probably won't come down to where it is, where it was.
Right.
But it will.
Right. What's that?
It will. Not at this point.
I mean, we can.
We can't predict it.
We can wait. And when we get the letter, we'll have to do it anyway.
Right.
But we might as well get on the list.
If we do it now, we'll get on the list. And the other thing is if we do it now before we get the letter, we don't have the state saying you have to have it completed by.
And then who's, those are the main stake on which more we have to pay or whatever.
Or having to hire somebody that I don't really want to hire.
Right. We should get on that, his list to get done.
We're more in control of it if we go with it.
Do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll agree. Nobody will ever want it done, so.
I don't want it done on everybody. So I'll entertain a motion to.
Let's see, I make, I, I make a motion to accept the request for proposal for GL twenty twenty-six townwide reappraisal.
Second.
Second half.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Select board comments and concerns.
I've always stolen.
For all time. For sure.
Other business, I don't think we got a whole lot.
Just that act two, act one fifty-seven thing.
Yeah, maybe at the next meeting we could bring this up again.
Oh, okay.
Do we have, we said we have a constable now?
We do.
We do.
But I mean, so if you eliminated that, then one of you, we would still have to do it. An officer would have to be appointed to do it.
Okay.
Maybe everybody can give it that some thought and we can put that on agenda again.
And that would really just be saving us the payroll for the constable.
Yeah.
Do the second for the class. Okay.
I mean, it's pretty much just a formality anyways to have a constable.
Pretty much.
So the next meeting we'll be doing administration, insurance and revenue in January. If Luma has anything else, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that one.
Are those in favor?
Aye.